Good evening and welcome to the May 24th, 2023 Litchfield School Board Meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those of you that can't see, we have a full house tonight, which we're excited about. So we're going to keep moving through and we'll get to you guys in just a minute. Review and revision of the agenda, any changes?
There are a couple of links that have been livened up for board members and then there were a couple items that inadvertently got left off that are carryover from last meeting. So those are on here and we'll highlight those when we get to them and frankly, if the board wishes to take additional time, that's okay, but we were trying to make sure that we kept making headway if we could.
Perfect. Are there any items from the consent agenda that anyone, any board member wishes to move to old business to be discussed more thoroughly?
I would like to move the Facilities Improvement Committee report. We had a meeting today and we have some developments just to inform the board of, so if we could move that to old business.
Sure.
Old business or new? Old?
Old, I think old business.
Yep, old committee.
Been around.
I will add a link underneath it.
Okay. Anybody else? Seeing none, moving on to end of the year activities. There is a document there highlighted that I believe you made Liz.
I did and I did put an asterisk or a dot saying it's not mandatory, just I know that school board members like to attend things. I have a senior, so I'm going to a lot of the things, but district music, academic awards, different things, LMS, Memorial Day things. And for full transparency, three of us went to academic awards, Tina, Heidi and I, and we did not talk at all. I was way back in the corner and they were way over there. So at no time was there a quorum. We didn't discuss school or anything.
Yep. There are going to be particularly graduation, I think the GMS concert, there are going to be events where there are going to be more than two board members, which would technically qualify as a quorum, but it is in our policies that it's understood that given we live in a small town and there are only so many events, we are going to sometimes be at the same things, but we have taken that pledge not to discuss board business during that time. So I think that was it.
It is, although I just typed in red that it's the board list for coordination and attendance. I heard from somebody in the public who said I can't access it.
Oh.
And so it's really not a list for the public of end of the year events. It's a board list so that you can coordinate your attendance at events.
Because I like to go to as many things. I always take the GMS graduation off for school and little things like that, that I want to go to as many things as possible.
Yeah, there are, there are end of the year lists at each school site and people should be monitoring those too.
Yeah, and you all added to it, all the administrators added to it. I appreciate that.
Yeah, I don't want to speak for the two ministers. I added the activities that I thought the board would be interested in attending, so I didn't put all the field trips and things like that, just more of the general community events.
That's very helpful, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on end of the year activities? Seeing none, we'll move into a summary of non-public actions from May 3rd, 2023. Ms. Harrison made the motion to accept the non-public meeting minutes from April 19th. Ms. McDonald seconded the motion. The motion passed 4-0-0. Ms. Ames motioned to approve the nomination of, I'm sorry for butchering names, Greg Pandezis?
Pantazis.
Pantazis as an LMS mental health clinician. Ms. Harrison seconded the motion, that one I should know, and the motion passed 4-0-0. Ms. McDonald motioned to approve the nomination of Catherine DeChard?
DeChard.
Okay, got that one. As an LMS school counselor. Ms. Harrison seconded the motion and the motion passed 4-0-0. Ms. McDonald motioned to approve the resignations as presented. Ms. Ames seconded the motion and the motion passed 4-0-0. Those resignations included John Bandicar from CHS, Joanne Ray from CHS, and Carrie Momney from LMS. We've moved on to now our student rep report. We have Emma.
So we have a lot going on at the high school these past couple of weeks. This week is Spring Fest, which is a spirit week and then it ends on Friday with a pep rally during the day. We have outdoor activities going on and the hypnotist is coming back again this year. This past Monday, there was an Academic Excellence Banquet held at the Puritan Back Room to recognize students that have a 3.92 GPA or higher. Yesterday, there was a Spring Pops concert at the high school. Student council today actually hosted a teacher car wash show appreciation for our awesome teachers. And today was also move of day for the eighth graders that got to meet the administration team and then student council gave them a tour of the school, kind of gave insight into what their high school life would be like. Oh, today we had a speaker come in that was fire of the Holocaust. The whole school got to hear from her. And tomorrow is trebuchet day. Students in physics classes built trebuchets and will be demonstrating them to the whole school tomorrow. I think some students in chemistry classes will also show off their bottle rockets.
Will you tell us what a trebuchet is for the people that might not know?
I'm pretty sure it's like one of those catapult things, right?
Fancy catapult.
Yeah.
Pumpkin chunk.
They've done pumpkins and stuff like that. The kids, the students build them, yeah.
Yeah, they've all been working hard on those. Awesome. Any questions for Emma?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Is what?
Is that an all-day thing or?
Oh, no, it's at the end of the day, I believe. Yeah.
Where are the bottle rockets being shot?
They're all going to the track field, I believe, so.
So they shouldn't reach my house.
Right.
Hopefully they go up.
Hopefully.
Thank you.
Thanks, Emma. And we move on to presentations and recognitions and we have Mr. Mitchell, Principal of GMS here to give us a report and talk to us about our friends who are here today.
Yeah, so I submitted a report and I'll stick around if you have any questions on that, but today I wanted to highlight some of our students. So, and I think I reported this earlier this year, we instituted Griffy Mail, so it's an in-school mail. And then over April vacation, I had a stack before and I realized that one third grade class had written me persuasive letters. And so I read through them and they were quite convincing. And so I thought, I want to bring them to the board because they're actually the better audience for what they're asking me for. And so just to let you know, I thought, you know what, I'm going to bring three or four students to highlight. So I asked all the teachers, I said, you know, just give me two in your class, thinking I'd start with eight and I'd present it to those eight kids and two or three would be like, thank you, but no, that's, I'm not interested. And then I'd have five or six and then I'd reach out to the parents and I'd have two or three that said, you know, like, oh, that's great, but we can't make it that night. Well, all eight said, yes, we want to do that. And all eight parents said, we're going to make it happen. So I have eight third grade students here who are going to come into with their essays and perhaps you may need to go back and revise to add things to new business tonight. But I'm going to ask Ava to come up first. Ava Elliott?
Dear School Board, I think we should get 7v7 soccer goals. Many kids at GMS play travel or rec. It would be nice to get extra practice. Soccer is a good way to get your body moving. It would also introduce new kids to the sport. There are currently two soccer goals, but we are not allowed to use them because the monitors cannot see us. An extra monitor could come and watch us there if we cannot get new 7v7 soccer goals where they can see us. The reasons I talked about today are why I think 7v7 soccer goals would be a good idea.
Good morning, Eli.
Dear School Board, we should get a football field. One reason we should get a football field is because when me and my friends play, we play football, we don't really know the area we're playing in. Second, we should get a football, second reason we should get a football field is when my friends and I play, we can get exercise. Third reason is so we know the yards, like 10, 20, so we know where we can do short passes. Last reason is so we have enough space to run without stepping out of bounds.
Luke, where's Luke? Luke's hiding. Come on up, Luke. Ready? You got this. Turn up the volume.
Dear School Board, these are some reasons why I think classes should be able to have a class pet. My first reason is we can learn to care for the pet. If we ever have that in the maw as a pet one day, we will already know how to care for it. My second reason is we can learn about responsibility. For example, we can learn to take care of the pets, of our pets better. Another reason is that pets can make you feel better. If someone is having a bad day, they can spend time with the class pet. My fourth reason is if someone just moved here, they might feel a little lonely because they don't, because they don't have any friends yet. But a class pet could, could help them because they could, they can play with the class pet and they could spend time with the pet. My final reason is that class pets can encourage students to do better on their work. Those are some examples why I think classes should be able to have class pets.
Nice job. And Claire. All right, Claire. There you go, Claire.
Dear School Board, have you ever been working and felt tired after a long morning or caught yourself nodding after a big lunch? I have felt this way too and my brain has been working hard all morning, learning new things. Or after running around at recess and then eating lunch. This is why I'm here. I, Claire Secard, would like to bring nap time to GMS. I have many reasons why this is a good idea. Reason number one, when you are tired at school, you can take a nap and recharge. But if you don't and you are tired, you cannot pay attention and fall to sleep in class. Reason number two, if you didn't get enough sleep the night before, you could take a nap and make up for lost sleep. Also, if you have trouble taking a nap, you can ask your teacher to play some nice calm music. Reason number three, if you fall asleep in class, you can miss the lesson and be confused and not know what to do. Instead, the whole class can take a nap and recharge and then listen to the lesson so no one misses out. Those are some reasons why I want to take nap time at school. It would be great if you can make this possible. Thank you for listening to my ideas. Hopefully we can have nap time at GMS.
Adeline, where's Adeline?
I need a nap time.
Dear School Board, in my opinion, I think GMS kids should get two recesses. One reason is kids need to get more energy out so they can focus in the classroom. Another reason is kids can socialize more and make more friendships. Also, kids need lots of exercise to stay healthy. Finally, outside you can play games that help you learn skills like teamwork and problem solving. These reasons are why I believe GMS kids should get two recesses.
All right, Grace, I know you've been waiting. Jumping up from your seat, everyone.
Dear School Board, I think we should have more lunch options each day. I like how restaurants have menus. The calf could give a menu with five options each week. Kids could choose which meal they want each day. Using weekly menus makes kids more independent because they make the choice they want on their own. An example of a weekly menu could be mac and cheese, cheeseburger, chicken nuggets, eggs or pasta. I like how mac and cheese, I like mac and cheese a lot. I would choose it all that week. This would also be a good practice for the real world. Kids would know how to read a menu and decide on what to eat. It could also help kids work on reading skills and you could have labeled pictures for the younger students. It also could help scales in the calf, or sales in the scap, calf, because kids would know that they could get something they like each day. I would get lunch more often if I knew I had a choice other than what it was listed on the menu is now. Parents wouldn't have to check as much to see if they needed to pack a cold lunch for the day. Each student could include a fruit or vegetable so parents don't have to worry about something healthy being included. You could use, you could sell or leftover, sell leftover fruit at the end of the week for students in snacks at class.
Dear School Board, my name is Siobhan O'Sullivan and I'm in third grade. I believe that you should provide comfortable individual chairs for each classroom in GMS. My opinion is that the chairs in the classrooms are very rigid and firm. These chairs can be uncomfortable to sit on. Sometimes for students, their hair can get stuck on the back of the seat. During testing, the chairs can be quite uncomfortable for your body. Students might even want to stand up just to get into a more comfortable position. My suggestion is to switch all the chairs we have at this moment to beanbag chairs. I think you should switch, I think you should switch the chairs because beanbags are very squishy, which happens to be comfortable to students. If you would not like to purchase snuggly beanbags for a school, my other suggestion is to buy each student cushions that will fit the chair. Students will be able to have one option if they would like to bring one pillow or one blanket. Please consider one of these options for our students who are from Memorial School.
And finally, and perhaps our most interesting, Lucy.
And we have this one that I changed up.
Oh, you changed it? We haven't updated one?
She's done more research.
Why Schools Should Have Secret Rooms by Lucy Hill. Dear School Board, I think we should have secret rooms in every room of every school, even outside, and this is why. It may seem weird to have secret rooms in schools, but people could be able to talk and do their homework early. It may also sound weird to have secret rooms outside, but if students want to play or talk in private, they can just find one. Secret rooms can, can be helpful in emergencies too. If there is someone bad in the building, people can hide in one, can hide in one or stay in their classroom if it is, if it's a secret room. Also, they can be for storage. For example, let us say that a teacher has a stash of candy. She doesn't want her students to find it and eat it since it is only for one day. They do a good job on their work. So she finds a secret room and keeps it in there. They can be even, they can even be used for keeping toys. If a teacher has a student in their class that steals, that steals toys and brings them home during class or when she or he finds one on, on the ground, the teacher has seen this happen and does not like it. So she finds her secret rooms and keep, and keeps the toys in there until they, until they use them again. Maybe they can even be used for keeping copies or at least, or at least the kids' things. Or each kid can have their own secret room. Can have their own secret room for their own stuff so it doesn't get stolen. One more reason why, why schools should have secret rooms is because some people may get sick in an emergency and they need to evacuate, but they are too sick to leave so the nurse, so the nurse can have a secret room in, in her room so she can keep the sick or hurt children safe in an emergency. Those were some reasons why schools everywhere should help, should have secret rooms in every room and even outside. Thank you.
So for your consideration. Once we had the test, we, we met together once and they brainstormed all the ideas. Each one picked an idea and then we met a few other times. And during those sessions, really all they wanted to know was, would they be YouTube famous? And I think they will be.
You will. I can promise at least 150 views.
As I have, if you have any questions for them or for me?
I think we need to add class pets to the policy review.
Mm-hmm.
And then look at the GMS school day time so that we can incorporate nap time into recesses.
Yep.
Talk to Lauren Crowley about lunch options and then look into.
Getting the field lines.
The field lines and then see if there's end of year funds for 7v7 soccer nets and comfy chairs.
Yep, and I'll be bringing secret rooms.
Excellent.
Is 77 soccer nets the number?
Is that seven versus seven?
7v7.
The size for seven on seven.
Good size.
I was wondering why we needed 77 on that.
They get bigger and bigger and bigger and bigger.
I just want to duplicate all of these requests for LMS. Such good ideas.
And I didn't get a chance, but I'll scan these all and send them over to the school board today to be entered into the official record.
Yes.
Amazing work, guys.
You guys can go on the town website and press the school board meeting and you'll be famous on your iPad.
Send it to your family from afar, friends far away.
Were you guys nervous? Were you nervous to talk?
You couldn't tell.
You guys did so good. You did so good.
And I know they've been practicing. I told them, you know, go read in the mirror and focus on pacing and volume and they nailed it.
You did. You guys all did wonderful. So we will think about these things.
Nice job. Please come back to school board meetings and tell us what else we should be doing.
You could be a rep when you're in high school like Emma.
If you have any questions on my report, I'm here.
No.
No, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. There was one question, sorry, on Facebook today about the half day early, it's going to be, the last day is going to be an early release day. Can you put in your weekly newsletter the time? So it was, I know it's a half day, but what actual time do I know when I have to be home from work kind of thing?
Yeah, yeah, that, yeah. Someone reached out to me after last week and just my, my dates to remember, I try to go 30 days out, so then it kind of hits now here where we're at.
Yep. And I saw you put on there that it was a half day, but I didn't know what to answer for the time. So, perfect. Thank you.
I have one more question. On your schedule of the end of the year events, on your, in your report, you listed push-up day. So will all the students be doing push-ups? Is that the staff doing push-ups?
Yes. Did I put push-up?
You did.
We all get ice cream. Is it the fourth graders going up or is it all the kids?
I think it should be the principal that has to do the push-ups. What do you think?
Right, right.
Can you demonstrate a push-up for us?
Any other questions? Any other questions for Mr. Mitchell? Seeing none. Thanks. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Good job, you guys. I'm sorry, the emergency room is when there's a bad guy.
Yeah, but that's what can be is.
That's true. I'm thinking.
Where do they play at recess that they can't play soccer or football? They can't go down to the lower, oh, that way, but they have, but they have a field on the other side, don't they?
It's the nap time thing in my office.
Playground structures and then the asphalt.
Oh, they can't play on the grass.
The monitors aren't able to see it. Like in the winter, they can slide down the leach field.
But there's still a field right there.
I think it's also very wet.
Yeah, probably.
So.
All right, our crowd has dwindled down to nobody and Jen.
I don't have much cuteness to share with you as that was. That was awesome. And I look forward to reading their essays when they get to the middle school and share what their interests are to have come up to us because I think that would be awesome.
Andrew, can you shut that door? Yeah, I just think it's going to pick up on the audio. So you're here to answer any questions we might have regarding changes to the schedule. And I believe what we were looking for last time was a little more understanding about what the differences were.
So absolutely, and you're correct. I was last week watching on my phone, but I was about 20 minutes behind you because I usually wa, I start watching late and I was 20 minutes behind. So when I was texting Mike the answers, it was after you guys had already passed it. So definitely, every student will have access. What we feel like is the adjustment to the schedule for next year will allow students more access to more of the Unified Arts because really the purpose of middle school is for kids to get a taste of everything, to determine their interests. And the way that our schedule has happened for the last two years, we have students who haven't had PE at all because of the way the schedule works out. So we've worked really closely with our, it's a combination of our core classes, which are our special education classes, had meetings and conversations with all of our Unified Arts teachers. And Mrs. Thayer is absolutely diligent in making sure that there are systems and things in place to make sure that students have access. So what would happen is students have two Unified Arts. The only change to the schedule, which is why I didn't put a whole lot of details in there about chorus and band, because that's not going to change. They're still going to have chorus or band all year long. And they will be this concurrent period so that they can, if they choose to do both, they can still do both, just in an alternating schedule like they do currently. And that alternating schedule is something that we're going to be incorporating for next year in order to give more access to more Unified Arts. So we would have A-Day, B-Days, Blue Day, White Days. Pick the name of the day. We haven't figured that out quite yet. But classes would rotate on a quarter schedule, but at a semester. So for example, a student may have a core class on A-Days because they're, for their individual education, individualized education plan, they only need three days of core instruction. On those alternate days, the B-Days, they might have music or library or something incorporated into their schedule, which gives them something that right now in the schedule we have this year, they wouldn't have access to. So it will rotate between a schedule that allows for a four-quarter rotation with PE, art, I'm doing this off the top of my head right now, tech ed and health. So that four-quarter rotation would flip-flop with Spanish, music and library depending on the grade level. So over the course of the four years, they would have access in rotating sessions to quarter or semester courses and it would counterbalance that chorus and band. So those chorus and band students would have access to all of the Unified Arts, which they currently don't have. So we feel like the schedule that we're proposing to build really allows all students access over the course of their four years. It might not be in one year, but over the course of their four years, they will have access to everything to get a taste of what's out there.
So making sure it's crystal clear, because I know this was a concern, every grade will have at least one quarter of PE.
And that quarter of PE will happen perhaps at a semester time. So for example, I'm going to say so because she's a seventh grader, she's going to come in next year and she will have a quarter schedule that on her A-Day might have PE for semester one, and on the B-Day, she might have art, while a peer might have the other two.
So Monday she has PE, Tuesday she has art.
In a 10-day rotation.
And that would carry over two quarters, so really the first half of the year.
For the first half of the year, they'd have four, in that, in that model, they'd have four Unified Arts because they'd have two, let's say, first period and two fifth period. And that would be in a 10-day rotation for the same duration of time. So we're not proposing a change to program. It's just a change in the timeline of that program. They would still have the same content. They'd still be exposed to the same curriculum. It's not changing anything except for how it's being proposed to be offered so that all kids can have access to it.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Has there been any study regarding student retention of information with that day break in between?
There are many.
I'm just concerned like if you, if you talk about Spanish.
Yes.
If you talk about Spanish as an example.
Yep.
And you have that day break, what are they actually retaining your?
We actually have consulted with our, sorry, Unified Arts teachers. And speaking specifically of Spanish, their, their understanding of that retention, they would rather have it in that every other day model over the course of a year versus over the course of just a semester. So if we took a Spanish model, right now Spanish is a semester-long course and we followed that same A-B pattern for Spanish, it would go all year. So they would have that access to that Spanish curriculum and content and that immersion in that even if it's in an every other day pattern, they're not, they're not doing it in isolation from August to January and then January to June, having zero Spanish because that's where that learning loss happens, when they don't have access to the language throughout the course of the whole time. So that continued exposure to the language will allow them to continue to foster and utilize that language in the model that our, I think our Spanish teachers have modeled very successfully this year. Those kids can speak Spanish like there is no tomorrow. You walk into those classrooms, you can speak here, listen, understand, comprehend because of that immersion. And that immersion is something that the Spanish teachers have requested in that every other day model for the year so that they can have that access. And those kids don't have that loss by not having it.
What's the problem we're trying to solve with this? Is it just more access to more kids?
More access to more kids. So what happens right now, the problem that we're trying to solve is I can, I have some fifth graders who never had PE this year. And to me, that's a travesty. Those are the kids that need to move the most, that need to get out there and have that opportunity to play and do something. So they've been kind of stuck with a semester-long course, which means they only have four for the whole year.
But Jen, that means when my kids were little, they stopped playing instruments. My boys need to run and they stopped playing instruments because they wanted to have gym and other things besides ba, which was unfortunate.
So it's go, it's going to give them that, that access to everything, giving them that little
That's awesome.
um, menu and taste, so that when they get to high school, they can, they can specialize more. They can say, you know, man, I didn't really think I'd be an engineer. I didn't think I'd like engineering, but man, I took tech ed and I was building those bridges where I was seeing how much weight, I mean, walking into, watching those kids right now, they're building little towers where they're seeing how much weight it can hold in fifth grade. And they are being engineers. And those students are like, this is awesome. Mrs. Grantham, do you know, I helped, my, my thing only weighed three ounces and it held eleven pounds, or whatever it was with the balsa wood and the, and the building that they had. So it's giving kids that access that they wouldn't have had before. And it's also solving the problem for our special education students, that they're getting access to things that they wouldn't have had in the past because of how we're designing their instruction. There are some students who still might not have access because they may need five days of, of core instruction, um, with a special educator. Um, but for those kids that we're able to, and we've been working with building the IAPs to represent that throughout the course of this, um, you know, winter, spring season, to be able to reflect that, so that the kids do have that option to get out and, you know, you find kids in middle school who will say, well, I don't want the special ed services, because I just wanna get out and play. I wanna go do PE, or I wanna be, and they need the special ed services. So if we're able to modify that and how those are being delivered and still give them access to what everybody else has access to, I think it's important. And it doesn't negatively impact everyone else in the process. It actually helps our chorus and band kids. It helps our special education kids. And it helps our students across all grade levels have access to every Unified Art, which right now they may not in their course of four years, if we stay with the schedule the way it's being built.
So are we solving a PE issue specifically?
It solves multiple issues.
Every, every Unified Art.
So it used to, I can say, when Grace was there, she had something similar to this, where she had gym, health, art and tech ed, or whatever, that rotated each quarter. The kids now, fifth and seventh grade, or whatever it is, don't have PE. And they went to semester-based, it, every other year type situation. And that was a concern by a lot of parents a couple of years ago. Um, so allowing them to go back to that quarter-long, but exposure each year to me, and again, I understand there are gonna be some kids that aren't necessarily gonna be able to do it because of their individual education plans, but for the majority, it sounds like they would be able to. I think that's, to me, that's huge.
One more follow-up question. What, what additional burden or stress does this put on our district staff?
So, we believe that it, um, and we have had a conversation actually along the way with staff. We had them fill out a wish list, um, when we've had our comment team plan to kinda talk about what's working about the current schedule and what isn't working about the current schedule. And people hit pie in the sky ideas of, you know, I'd love to have my Unified Art last all year long, a hundred eighty days. I would love to have my Unified Art, um, be only qu, a quarter-long, because that's really how much content I have to cover. So to do it for a semester has been a huge stretch. Um, to have my Unified Art, um, be every other day all year, how, how each of them presented what they dreamed. And we did our best to, to look at that model and build a schedule that fulfills as many dreams as possible with the understanding that we can please some of the people some of the time, but there honestly isn't a way to please all of the people all of the time. And we have to look at what's really best for the students. Um, and while not burdening our staff with nobody is going to be teaching four grade levels in a day, nobody is going to have untenable, um, plans as we're talking. And we're, we're still working with our Unified Arts staff in the conversations along the way about how is this going to work? Is this gonna, are there impacts that we're not seeing as we look at planning it? We, we met with our Unified Arts um, team leader today, as we're still in the process of tweaking and modifying, because we haven't finished the process yet. Are we missing something? Is there some feedback that you need to give to us? And we'll be, they'll be having a conversation as Unified Arts team to come back to us and say, oh, you missed this part. And then we can look at going back to the schedule and saying, oh, that's a part we didn't consider. And let's see if, if we can make that work with. Mrs. Thayer is very, very precise and, and cares about kids and cares about kids having that access, as I, as do I. Um, the number of spreadsheets and models that we have attempted as, this is a draft, oops, that's a, that's a no, or let's try it this way. This is not gonna work. The, this is not gonna work. And we didn't wanna present something to the Unified Arts team that was a partial product and then have people get very upset and worried about what a partial product would look like, because we had to kinda work out the kinks before we bring it forward. Now that we're at that point where we feel like we have a good base, we're gonna be able to talk and, and talk about how that looks. And the conversation that we had with, uh, Mr. Momney, who's the Unified Arts team leader today, um, you know, he said, that's awesome. I'm gonna bring it forward to my team. I, I think that's doable, because they'd have two grade levels in the A-B rotation. They'd only have two grade levels a day, and they'd be in succession. So it would be, for example, if I had fifth grade, second and third period, and then seventh grade, fifth and sixth period hypothetically. And I'm just throwing random numbers out there. For Mr. Momney, that means he'd only have two lessons to plan for that day. And then for the next day, he might have two, the other grade levels.
And he was socializing that with the team today?
Yeah.
So what was the feedback? Do we know yet?
I don't know yet.
Yeah, okay.
But we do need to move forward with the process of getting a schedule done. Um.
Yeah, I guess I'd like to understand what the teachers say, right? I'd like, I'd like to understand their perspective of this and, and what the impact is from, from their view.
And I think that's why you hire us, because that's what we're working to do, is working with the teachers to help make sure that for the majority of the students and the teachers that we're meeting their needs, we are sitting with.
Yeah, but you just said you didn't have all the feedback. So I'm trying to balance that.
Right. Right. No, no, no.
Coming here in a pro, proposal, but you don't have all the feedback from the teachers. Right? Did I misunderstand that?
No, it was, it was brought forward last meeting, and there were some questions that weren't able to be answered, which I was trying to answer this evening. Um, and the idea of the board approving the schedule, I don't remember that happening before. So that's just where I, I, the, the power of the board, what you would like us to do. You want us to wait and not continue to schedule and come back and present again?
You need to start.
We do.
I agree. Timeline, right? Absolutely.
Has anyone come to you with concerns? Is there any reason to believe that there are concerns out there?
I have had one teacher come with some concerns about rumors, about hypotheticals. It's not about what the actual model looks like, which is why we wanted to talk directly to Mr. Momney, get that information out there, and then have that feedback from them and be able to modify as we go from that point.
Are board members aware of concerns?
No.
Does anything come directly to you?
No.
Not specifically. I, you know, I'm also just questioning, like, with the A-B schedules. I love the idea of giving more kids more exposure, nothing to do. I'm just questioning, like, what's in the best interest of their learning? And is that, I'm just contemplating in my mind, is that really, does it really help them? Right? I get the extended period of time, but that break every other day, I think really hinders their learning in, in whatever that Unified Arts subject is.
I disagree a hundred percent.
So please tell me why, because I, I'm just asking as a question.
No, I think I would rather have my students every other day than jammed in every day for six months, because it prolongs their learning. They take a day to decompress, get a break from Mrs. McDonald, and absorb what was taught. And then we do a little minute, two-minute reflection.
You lived it. I just.
During COVID, we had kids every other day. It was like, we, we taught the same lessons ten times for ten different cohorts of kids. And they were, they just seemed more ref, they weren't burnt out. Does that make sense? It's like an adult, not that, my kids would be burnt out from music. I'm sorry to music lovers. My sons cannot sit through a music class. It was torture. And they're burnt out. And I would rather have them have something they don't really enjoy, have a break in between and go back refreshed and maybe give it another chance. But I, I don't know. That's my personal thought, and I'm sure a lot of teachers think that way.
I'm, I'm thinking too, that, uh, Campbell operates on an A-B schedule.
They do.
And, um, so it is sort of preparing kids for the schedule at the high school. But you're not doing A-B with English, Social Studies, math.
It's just Unified Arts.
You know, each day for those. It's only the Unified Arts that have an A-B. So it's sort of an ease into the schedule that the high school is currently running for all courses, um, where the eight, uh, eight credits that a student can take are all on an A-B.
Four, 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 four.
It, it's not, uh, you know, we grabbed this out of the mid, middle, thin air and just decided to implement this. It's, it's something that we've talked to other schools. I've seen it in practice. When I was in Hudson, it was something that we did.
At middle schools?
At middle school. An A-B schedule. And that was for all content. I will say for all content, I would agree with you. That is not ideal for all content.
No.
For math and science and social studies and language arts. I think there's that importance for that continuity. But with the idea that this is a taste of the program, I think that that just gives them that opportunity to have that taste, you know, absorb, take a break, maybe have some homework in that idea, maybe have, you know, parents are clamoring for more homework, more ideas of rigor and things for the kids to do. And having that opportunity for those kids to have access to that over the course of the time, I think, I think will be helpful for all.
So will this be board voted? Is that the idea?
I think that was, we did for the CHS schedule changes at the last meeting. And so I, I think that would be the plan for this meeting as well.
I'll make a motion to approve the LMS schedule for next year as proposed.
I'll second. Are there any other questions or comments?
Just, I talked to Mrs. Thayer about it at the disaster day. And she explained it to me, I think, pretty thoroughly. And I think it sways my concerns that you had, Andrew, as far as the UAs not being daily.
Yeah, I still don't know enough about it, right?
Yeah.
That's the challenge. I sit in this seat right now. I don't know enough about it and what's in the best interest of the kids. And that's where I struggle with this vote.
This is where we had, this is the way we had it like three years ago?
With the quarters, yeah. And to, I hesitate to say this, because we do have an overseeing responsibility, but when it comes to educational approaches and day-to-day versus every other day, I have to trust the educational experts in the room. Mr. Mitchell, Ms. Thayer, Ms. Grantham, Ms. Clinton Jones, Mr. Hess, and Mr. Perez, just to name them all, make sure I didn't forget anyone. Um, because I can't imagine they're gonna put forward a schedule that they haven't researched and believe is in the students' best interests.
Well, agreed. Uh, but I, I think what I, I'm still balancing what I heard is I don't know that we have all the information yet either.
But that's where, we'll make those tweaks where that information comes back. If I have a, a Unified Arts teacher that is wholeheartedly opposed and has major concerns, then we would bring it back to this board and say, hey, this, this is where, you know, this A-B schedule isn't gonna work, and we're gonna go back to the quarters, semesters as concurrent days. And it may impact the access for our special education students. And we have to be able to check off the box that we're willing to keep them out of it. And I think we've heard from parents, we've heard from students, that that's something that's important to them. So we'd have a large population that would be upset with that decision.
Just to comment also, I mean, I've seen a lot of different middle school schedules. The ones that I think are crazy makers are like wat, waterfall schedules. So you cut one class out a day, so you don't have any, any meeting of that class one day a week. And then the schedule changes so much that a middle schooler who's struggling with, um, you know, getting organized.
Routine.
Transitioning.
Every day is different. Like, English is here, then it's here, then it's here, then it's here. I mean, those schedules are a disaster. It's not what we're talking about. We're talking about a schedule with, uh, and I think one of the key things you've tried to do is keep a level of continuity with the way it's approached with some flexibility going in. So in the grand scheme of middle school schedules, this is pretty good. Um, I've seen some that I'm like, that is a crazy maker. I don't know how, I don't know how the staff know where they're supposed to be on any given day when it's flexing and rotating like that, so.
What, what I can say with absolute certainty, not one of our Unified Arts teachers was happy with the way the schedule has gone for the last two years.
Right.
So we heard that loud and clear from our staff. We've had multiple sit-down meetings with the Unified Arts team to talk about what, what are your wants and needs leading up to this? So this design is not, again, it's not pulling from left field. It's taking all of that feedback and kind of moving the parts and pieces. It's like a Jenga game where you pull one out and you stick it on top and is anything gonna fall when you do this? Nope, nothing's falling right now. Let's look at the next piece and stack. Um, so this is through fe, it's not Martha and I sitting in a closed door and, and having a conversation and building the schedule. Yep. This is, this is a conversation with all of the Unified Arts teachers. And there are lots of, lots of voices. There are actually ten at the table. And it, it's, again, it's hard to please all of them at the table. And we're doing our best to kind of meet components of everybody's needs to, to move something forward.
But there's willingness to flex if, um, a staff member has a strong opposition to this working for their needs, right? So if art or CS or Spanish or whatever it might be comes to you and says, hey, this A-B schedule just won't work, you'll be
I think we definitely.
Flexing the model to do that?
Flex and have a conversation about what, what are the concerns? How can we work to make it work for the vast majority? Because if I have one teacher that says this doesn't work at all, and I have nine that are like, oh, this looks great. This is gonna work for us. Then I'm gonna work with that one teacher to say that I, I understand these are your struggles. What can I do with those struggles to help bring you forward, to at least feel comfortable to try it? Because if next year is a debacle and they try it and they go, oh, I hate it as much as I hated these last two years, then we're gonna come back to the drawing board again. We're gonna look at what works for kids, because that's why we're here, is for the students we have in front of us and to help meet those students' needs and make sure that they are getting what they need at the table.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, there is a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the LMS schedule as proposed, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion passes five zero zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to community comment. We have a community back there. Any comment? No? Okay, just checking, making sure. Um, so we will go ahead and close community comment. Correspondence?
That's what I've been doing. I've been trying to catch up. I missed one, but I'll start with what I have. May eighth, Carolyn Light to the school board discussing the South Central Music Festival. We had a total of six students selected via direct, director recommendation, three band and three chorus members. Sarah Durfee, Alex Kasprzac, Chloe Sellers, Viv Lambert and Addie Leary, and Hannah Kouchor for voice. The groups were composed of seventh and eighth graders with a handful of sixth graders from across the region. May eighth, Andrew to Doug Taunton, asking Mr. Taunton if school district employees' names can be withheld from budget reports. Doug provides a copy of report. Andrew requests another way for budget committee to correlate names with ID numbers. Mrs. McDonald inquires why. Andrew wants to ensure we are not duplicating or mo, or counting employees, double counting employee names. This is masked by just having the position listed. He also wants to track and monitor raises provided at the employee level, which without mapping, we will have no way to do so. He believes that including an employee number is a good alternative here. May eighth, Bob and Tara Keating to Samantha Fowler regarding discussion on independent diplomas and functional skills curriculum. Samantha Fowler responds inviting them to a meeting to discuss further steps. Sophia, oh, what did I say? Samantha? That's weird. Oh, that was a music teacher in my school. Keatings asked for an update on functional skills curriculum. Samantha?
Sophia.
And I put Samantha through the whole thing. Was that the music teacher in our old school? I'm really sorry. Uh, she responds that there is no functional skills curriculum at this time. The Keatings asked for updates on diploma and ask for updates on what is being discussed at this time regarding functional skills. Sophia responds and asks for an in-person discussion regarding foundations documents and BU life skills curriculum. May eighth, JD Sun, after an hour of no communication, desk was to the board. After GMS ma, power outage, mass communication is available. We need to do a better job keeping parents and community informed. Mr. Sun believes that the SAU should be in charge of communication. Dr. Jetty, he was in contact as soon as the situation was identified. Once they had a handle on situation, they communicated with parents. It took time to understand situation and develop the best course of action. He remained remote for communication purposes, not to overwhelm the cellular network. And that's where I left off. And there was another, he appreciated the feedback. And I don't know what happened after that, because I lost that. Ellie will tell you right now.
Back and forth.
Oh, it's something about not having power, no bathrooms, but that was a misunderstanding. There were functioning bathrooms and potential for no hot lunch. Safety wasn't an issue, but it's the lack of communication that he had the biggest issue with. And, um, one of the issues we had, Dr. Jetty responds about bathrooms were closed because no one thought, thought we were in a well. But we're not on a well. We're in town water, so the bathrooms could be used. And, um, the water was on. We have three septic tanks that hold 10,000 gallons each. So there was bathroom, and he appreciated this, um, communication from a parent. I'm sorry, J D, I lost that somewhere in my eight trillion emails. May 10th, Andrew Cutter requesting information on new developments in student predictions. Mike Jetty's share spreadsheet.
It was a budget, budget committee request, by the way.
Budget, yeah, that was for a budget committee request, a follow up from May 4th, May 2nd. Mike Jetty's share spreadsheet for housing development. Um, we had a meeting with B S, um, board, budget committee chairs and will gain insight into the proposed developments. Today, Liz McDonald responds, planning board has shared more information in regards to future building in town. We'll discuss tonight at the meeting. There were some other things that came up in that document, the two other things. May 11th, shared an end of year activity spreadsheet with board. May 17th, Andrew Cutter sharing disappointment that the parents parked on G M S playground during L M S ball games. On May 17th, so no after school students could use the playground. He does not think cars should be parked on playground after school. Heidi Ames responds to Mr. Cutter to follow the chain of command. Mr. Mitchell, Mr. Grantham, and Mr. De Forni regarding concerns in the after school coordinator. And the opposing, and you mentioned that the opposing team did not have buses, so all of the parents showed up during G M S dismissal. Dan Mitchell echoed the same sentiments. It was a perfect storm. Cars coming from the game from out of town at dismissal time at G M S. Mrs. Grantham responds, and Mr. De Forni are, they are aware of the situation, have reached out to coaches to speak to their parents. May 17th, Anne Ann Maratti attached manifesto review. May 17th, Corey Sulzen introduces himself as the new L E A president to the board. May 17th, Heidi Ames sending regrets about not being able to, um, to attend the community forum. Well wishes sent from board. Um, email from Mr. Plansky that the for- forum inquiry, he asked why, um, the information wasn't posted prior to the meeting. Mrs. McDonald and Mrs. Harrison said they were attached on the emails on May 9th and 18th, and they were highlighted as a link. In, May 20th, Heidi Ames and Andrew Cutter. Ms. Ames addresses Andrew Cutter's concern about not being made of, aware of the L E A election. This was via text. Ms. Ames explained L E A is a separate entity, entity, and that is not overseen by the district. We have no direct communications with L E A leadership unless the board chair and superintendent are aware. May 30, 23rd, today, um, no, not today, sorry. May, Kim Kleiner, May 23rd, informed the board approving $52,148 from L M S impact, for, from L M S impact fees. And the letter will be attached to the minutes. And May 23rd, at this afternoon, Anne Ann Maratti sent credit card manifest.
Whew.
I'm sorry about, I, I have to change Samantha. That's crazy. Sorry.
Thank you very much. Moving on to general business, uh, superintendents report.
Yep. So I still have a pin in the L M S sign question. We're still working on that. Um, I have reached out to the town and I'll keep the board up to date, but I'm leaving it on here because I think it's important that we, uh, not lose sight of that. Uh, for debriefing the community forum, so we hosted the community forum on, uh, last Wednesday. Jan kept minutes for us, so we have those minutes that we'll be able to send off. Um, and there are also, um, kind of a summary doc. I kept track of the parents who came up to speak, and so I'll summarize those thoughts if they're not totally captured in the minutes and get those sent off. But I'm curious if board members have other feedback, uh, about the community forum. You know, remember it was, it's us hosting it, but it's really the state putting it on through Fred. But thoughts are things that I can do to help other communities to, um, they're having like 20 of these things across the state.
I was disappointed that there wasn't more of a presentation. It was kind of a, you have 139 pages, what questions do you have? Um, it, I think it would have been a lot more helpful if, you know, for example, the graduation competencies, like that. That could have been a great discussion.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, we were able to find them within the 139 pages and then display them.
It's 20, isn't it, Craig? Is it 20?
It, yeah, but.
And we're 24 in.
Right, it's for credits, but the old ed rules didn't have what students should be able to do when they graduate from us, from a New Hampshire, with a New Hampshire state diploma. And so they, they put in competencies that all of our student, students across New Hampshire should be able to meet these competencies. Um, so that was a new thing that was completely brand new. I, I wish he had spoken a little bit more about that. Um, it turned into more of a debate on whether Common Core and competency based education is the way to go, which, you know, we have those discussions in our own community. But this was definitely the state reporting on the new state, um, ed rules. You know, the revision of the ed rules, which they, the state hired Fred to do, Fred and his committee to do. So it kind of turned into something and a lot of information was lost, I think.
I agree, um, wholeheartedly. Uh, I think the way it was presented was it was, uh, a rule, side by side type of comparison. Here's the rules, here's what's changing. And really, the reality of that session was it was a competency based bias behind the whole, the whole presentation.
Agreed.
Right, I agree. I mean, Fred's clearly passionate about competency. That's great. But in that role, it shouldn't have been competency only, right? It should have been here are the rules and here's what we're thinking about changing.
I thought personally, I thought some of his things are wildly unattainable. We can't do personalized learning and send kids out into the community every day. It's, you can't do that. Do you know what I mean? He does, I think he was passionate about it, but I wanted to hear black and white. It was 20. We know we're 24. Kids who get a diploma with distinction are 30. But what can they do? Tell me, what do you want them to do? Should they know the Declaration of Independence? Should they be able to be past Algebra II? I, I.
Can we talk about the 165 days too? Like that, that's what sticks in my mind. Moving from 180 days to 165 is the proposal.
But it's the same number of hours. I think that was, was.
Yeah, it's 990.
They were calculating hourly, and, and the 165 is based on the average length of a school day or something like that. So the math was, the, the, the learning, and they took the focus off instructional into learning, which I think is a good, you know, kind of a, a different shifting, shift in perspective. Um, but it was still the same amount of educational time, just divided up into fewer days, I think. But again, like a clear side by side, a couple of slides explaining that would have been helpful.
So really helpful feedback. Um, I, I talked to four superintendents who hosted prior to us. And the presentation improved by the time it got to Litchfield, just so you're aware. But I think generally, um, the feedback matches what we're hearing. And so now the key thing is, um, to summarize, what I want to do is kind of do a summary document. And I'll include these slots in that document that goes to Fred. Um, and then when it goes to the state board for approval, which it looks like it's going to be in the fall at this point, um, they'll have that feedback from our session. So we will, we will at least have that voice be heard.
And this is the minimum standards.
The minimum standards, and that's, that's the thing to remember is it's always been a 20 credit diploma in the minimum standards. We exceed that with 24, um, in Litchfield because that's the local control piece. And this is always the push pull tension with the state board. Um, they can write rules and so forth, but the local control of the board at the local level is what matters. And so, um, you know, they're in that position of sort of making recommendations and being aware of how the local communities feel, so.
I wasn't able to be there, but did they explain how they're going to get the same number of hours into 165 days? Are we going to do a longer school day? Are we removing some stuff that's not instructional?
If you take the minimum standard now, it calls for 990 hours. And if you divide it by the number of hours we have in a school day, we're done at about day 165. So all they're doing is they've said you can choose an hours based schedule or a days based schedule. And now they're setting the days to the hours that are there. So it's, it's just kind of more of a clarification. Um, you know, we've talked in the past that we could finish school at day 165. We have met the minimum hours. Um, however, there's a bunch of other nuances that go into that, that we would have to really discuss and try to figure out where that, where that stands. But, um, it, the hours are what matter, and it's instructional hours. And that's the thing that gets squishy, that it requires a lot of conversation. 165 instructional hours. I'm sorry, 990 instructional hours. All right. Thank you for that feedback. Um, so as, as mentioned in the emails, so the L E A has had elections and there are new officers. Um, Holly and I met with Corey Sulzen, who is the new president, and Stacy Leary, who is the vice president of the association. We've had our first meeting with them, um, and are doing some really good work going forward. So I just wanted the board to be aware that that did occur. Um, we weren't, we weren't aware of the election. I mean, it's, it's, they're a private entity. And so they have their own process, and, um, then they send people to the monthly meeting that we have to review matters.
And they have their own lawyer?
They do. And they have the, um, one topic that we are working on is the educator evaluation model.
Mm-hmm.
Um, basically, we have a, it's about 150 page document of how teachers in Litchfield are evaluated. The date stamp on it is 2016-17, so it was adopted in the fall of 16, and it was modified in the spring of 17 slightly.
It's a little outdated.
It's a little bit outdated. So, uh, we've met with the officers and have proposed a process to streamline that and are meeting with them actively now. And I'm saying this to the board because, um, depending on how the conversations go, and if we have an agreement and a recommendation, I would like to bring forward, um, a, an updated model to be put in place before the start of next year. Um, right now, we have a five page hyperlinked document. So we've taken 150 page unwieldy document, honestly, and we've reduced it into a hyperlinked document with some adjustments to the process that will better allow teachers to understand the process, teachers to get the feedback they're seeking, and the administrative team to provide the appropriate level of, uh, evaluation and supervision. So, um, and Dan was on the committee with the admin team. Uh, Martha represented the middle school, Jake represented the high school. Um, and then the teachers have, uh, sent teachers, Corey, uh, being one of them, to also review the process. So it's going fairly well, fairly quickly. Um, we've got a couple of more meetings scheduled, and I anticipate something coming forward in the summer. So I just want the board to be ready for that.
So do we have access to this five page hyperlink document?
Right now, it's still a draft, so as soon as the committee finalizes that, you will have access to it. You have access to 150 page document. I'm happy to get that for you, but I.
I'm trying to get through the 139 pages.
Still working on it.
Yeah.
Does it involve a walkthrough model?
It, well, walkthrough model is in the current. The current draft, um, it does place more, um, more clarity around what a walkthrough looks like. And it does make that the preferred model going forward. So it is, um, it is more based on a walkthrough.
So explain to the new guy what the walkthrough model is.
So it, teachers traditionally have been evaluated by, well, first of all, why is it 150 pages? There are rubrics that define what good teaching looks like, right? And so those rubrics are replicated over and over throughout the document. By making those hyperlinks, it's not necessary to update every time a rubric changes, okay? Um, and so in a traditional evaluation model, a teacher has a pre-conference, sit down with their administrator. Uh, the administrator goes in and observes an entire lesson. And then there's a post conference, a write-up that the administrator does, and then a post conference that is done to discuss that.
And why don't we do that anymore?
Um, and so the idea is that in some cases, um, it's not as authentic because, um.
We know when they're coming and the lesson to plan and.
And so forth. So the, the shift to a walkthrough model is that, um, and our, our principals do this anyway. They're walking around in the classrooms. They're visiting classrooms. They're seeing what's happening. Um, and what the walkthrough model does is allows the administrator to capture maybe six to 10, uh, 10 minute check ins into a class with feedback to that teacher, um, and ongoing dialogue about what's happening in that classroom that then gets summarized into an observation report. So instead of 160 minute sit down, you have a series of, of six to 10, 10 minute conversations.
That's brutal on an administrator, sorry.
And.
But more authentic. I can see that.
And it actually is not as brutal as you think. So I, I, I would encourage you to wait until we work out the details on it and then see the way, because putting it into operation is what's brutal.
Mm-hmm.
But I think we're looking for some real efficiencies in the way it goes into operation, and it will be helpful to everybody. So, um, so it should be available to you fairly soon. And we will, we will do a presentation and walk you through it. We won't ask you to read the document. We will make sure that you are oriented to it and understand where it stands.
Sounds good.
Has there been any discussion, um, I know it's early days with the new administration with the L E A, but I know from time to time, the previous L E A president would, would be here, listening into our meetings. Has there been any discussion, initial discussions about future interaction with the L E A and attendance at board meetings?
Uh, didn't even come up in a topic, so, but I can, I can bring that forward.
That used to be, they used to have a, an L E A member at every meeting.
I know that, that has stopped notably, noticeably over the past six, eight months.
It's also stopped since COVID.
Yeah.
And it stopped since they weren't really, the recordings weren't as good at the school.
Yeah, it's been a while.
Now you can watch the video. And make those kids, you know, famous on YouTube.
Yeah, I'll, I'll ask that question. Yep. And then the last thing I had for you was just a report on the G M S power outage, right? So we did have that power outage. Thank you for sharing the email. Um, you know, it, it's interesting in the middle of that, and this is something I, I think the community has to understand. Our number one priority is student safety. So the initial call with Dan was at 7:40 moments after the power went out. And hi- his first request was, you need to flip me to a two hour delay and, you know, give us time, buy us time. And I looked at my watch and I said, the buses already picked kids up. And when the buses had picked the kids up, mom and dad went to work. I can't flip now. I said, people get frustrated when I flip at 5:30 in the morning, that I can't flip at 7:45, um, to this. So the kids are coming, so now we need to figure out how to receive them safely and, and get in place everything that we need to. And I can assure you that Dan and I talked, I don't even know how many times that morning, but there was a lot of back and forth, always with student safety at the top of the list, um, and making sure that we were able to accommodate, uh, everybody who was coming in. And at the same time, trying to figure out where we were with, um, with EverSource. And when they anticipated, I mean, their very first call to us was that the power would be back on by 9:15. So we were like, 9:15, that's not bad. We can make this work. Of course, it then got delayed further once they assessed the situation. Um, but just, I, I hope everybody understands, we are, it's all hands on deck. Everybody's taking care of what they need to, and then communicating with parents is something we need to do. But we were kind of waiting till we had information to communicate out. Um, and so in, in the future, perhaps we can get something out more quickly, but it all depends on where that assessment ends up lying. Dan, did you have anything else from that morning to report or summarize?
Yeah, I, I think Mike said it, that safety was obviously the utmost of importance. Um, normally, when we have a power outage, it either happens before everyone comes around. Like we arrive at school and there's no power, we know we have time, or kids are already there and they're kind of contained. This is that like perfect storm of like, they were coming and we lost power. And so our first, uh, our, our first thing was kind of to, um, secure and keep the students safe, um, step by step until we could figure out what was happening, where we're going, and what we could do. So that's why we held them on the buses for a little bit longer. We held them on the buses and we took the kids from the cars and we put them in the gym. That way, we basically had two locations where we knew all students were. They were either here or there. And then as we assessed and we're getting information from EverSource, um, it was also happening around the same time that the kids were giving us signs that they needed to go somewhere else, you know, like couldn't have been. So then we were able to figure out, and also, we needed time to kind of plan and debrief with the staff too, because all these are happening. We needed all the staff to secure the students. We then needed to take them in. And so we just kind of rolled with it, and then as we were getting more information, we could happen more. And so the first thing, and we were lucky that, um, we actually had, uh, Dave Ross with us that day. He just happened to manage shifts, so he could give us all the rundown. And so the first was, hold on even using bathrooms. And then as it went, he said, okay, no, these bathrooms we can use because, long story. We have grinder pumps that need electricity and if you back up, so he said, we can use bathrooms from here on now. So we just kind of, um, played it by ear, but it was something that happened at the worst possible time that it could have happened. And it's also one of those things that as much as we plan, as much as we prepare, as much as we drill. much as we drill, you realize there's always going to be one little timeframe that you just never know. So now we kind of have a template for how do we handle it if it happens again, but-
Buy flashlights for the bathrooms?
We have flashlight. We had, we had, we, one of the things we had to do was gather all the flashlights so it looked like-
They should be in the emergency bag.
So we gathered all the flashlights so that they could use the bathrooms in the school and in case you knew, if you, you heard or saw, we did have one porta potty. And so even till we could figure out the, the bathroom situation, we utilized staff to literally get out. And so we had this line of like twenty kids deep and if anything, there was an adorable moment because like the Eversource truck like drove by while we had this line of twenty kids at the porta potty and they cheered and he honked his phone. And then the replacement pole went by and he, they cheered and he honked. But then we were able to get them all back in and then it was able, but food services was ready to go with, with a contingency plan using the high school to get them fed, not knowing when the power came on, but the power came on basically just in time. So we got kids breakfast that wanted breakfast. We got kids lunch that wanted lunch. And based on the time, it came on just after eleven o'clock because we had our, our meeting and I started it from my truck because I needed to charge my phone and then I was able to-
Can I ask you a question and please answer? Pretend like he's not here. Would Dr. Jettie have helped the situation being at, at GMS? Because I can tell you if our, God help me, our superintendent at the school would have been a hindrance. I, do you know what I mean, like at the school?
I don't know what he would have done because I don't know what I would have told him to do. I mean, we were just literally trying to figure it out. So I would have, I probably would have said like, can you help kids go to the bathroom? Can you usher? Like get in there with all like the tutors and stuff and usher?
Let me explain what I was doing so you understand.
Because I did hear bits and pieces of this and that.
I called Eversource. Okay, so I was on the phone with our liaison for Eversource. That's not the principal's job. He's taking care of kids. I called Eversource. I arranged for the kids to be transported to the high school if we had to divert to that, so.
How did parents hear that? Because that was a rumor, wasn't it? Or was that written anywhere?
The rumor that I had heard was that the kids were going to be sent home.
I heard like three different rumors.
We never discussed-
And I think that, I don't know where, where I heard that from, if it was a Facebook rumor or what.
Yeah.
That would have sent people into a full-blown panic.
Never discussed anybody home because parents aren't there. There is no way, Peter, I'm going to put a five-year-old at the end of a driveway and say, have a nice day.
Oh, I actually would hope not, but I think if we had got communication out early and said, this is what we're not, we understand we don't know the full situation, but the kids are here and safe and for now, we're not doing anything.
So-
That could have gone out probably at-
We were making sure that, well, I think the first communication went out at-
Nine.
Before nine, actually, a little before nine. But we, we did communicate to make sure that if we had to move everybody to Campbell, we could do that because that would be a space that we could bring everybody. So I was in communication with the SAU about that. I'm trying to think of the other, oh, and obviously that involves transportation. So I was on the phone with first student and saying, okay, I need, I need your drivers to stay there. And I don't, not sure how long, but they need to stay and we need to make sure that we can, how many buses can you leave behind? Because I don't know exactly where the drivers need to go next, but we need to make sure that we had enough that we could move the entire school in two waves, two trips. We could get there and get back, get there and get back, right? So, so all of that stuff, I'm, Dan, take care of the kids. Dave, take care of the building facility needs. Let me do this, I'll give you a call back. So once we had it figured out, then the communication went out to parents to say, here's what we have going on and where we are. And I think we sent, I don't know how many parent emails that day, at least three, I think.
Three, yeah.
With updates on where we stood, so, but I just-
How did you send them if there was no electricity?
Because I was remote. I, I stayed, I got the call while I was still at home and I stayed at home because I had electricity and I was able to do it. Text number two, I think, came from the liquor store on I-93 because I pulled over at the rest area and sent out the, I'm like, they're, they're going to have Wi-Fi if I can't get on and I was able to get that message sent. So no, I was not at the liquor store, to clarify.
I would be if you have a liquor store.
There's the quote, you got it, you got the quote.
So first message, eight fifty-one, nine twenty-one, ten oh-one, and eleven twenty-seven.
I just keep thinking about how many times Mr. Perez sent emails about a shelter in place, this scare, that scare. And Mr. Perez is the one who sent all of those emails, like, but there was electricity there.
Right, and-
I could send it from my phone. Yeah, yeah. So just to give you a quick timeline, it happens at, let me re-say, right around seven forty. And, and I, I can say this publicly now, so this, this happens at seven forty and all I know is the power goes out, okay? So the power goes out and for some reason, when the power goes out, I think everyone does this, you go outside and be like, what's going on? So you know, like, like human nature, go outside, go-
Especially like it's a sunny beautiful-
Yeah, you're like, what, you go outside, you're like, what's going on? And so I go outside and, you know, what's going on? And I'm approached by a staff member who witnessed it. So first thing, emotional comfort, you know, get her excited. Now we're starting to gather information. While we're gathering information, we now have, we'll say, an emergency personnel scene also developing in our parking lot. And this is when parents are starting to show up to, to drop kids off. And I know that we're three minutes, five minutes away from buses, so we just need to basically secure the kids, secure the kids, secure the kids. I think both Dave and I called you at the same time, right? I think-
Yeah.
Yeah. I think when I called, you had already talked to Dave or, or vice versa. And then it just kind of developed from there. And so parents are coming to drop their students off. They know something's happened ahead. They hit the sense that the power's getting off and there are emergency vehicles in the parking lot. So the questions that I'm getting are, what the heck? I said, you know what, just come on in, sweetie, why don't you go to the gym? We're going to go to the gym, we're going to figure things out. And I told the parents, I said, we got them, we're staging them here. We may end up going to Campbell at some point, but I just want to let you know, we're going to take them. So I'm going to slip that to a few parents and that took off. So if you wanted to where, never was, we're going to go home. But it was always, we're going to take them, we're going to keep them safe if we need to, we may have to go to Campbell later, but we're going to take them, you're going to go to the gym for now while we figure things out. Just get them out of the cars and away from, because I didn't know what was developing over there. I just, I didn't know if they were staging, I didn't know. But I had a few different multicolor lights on the far end of the parking lot and wanted to get the kids and get them safely. They're coming on a bus, they're going to stay on a bus till we, until we know basically what's going on. And so that was twenty, twenty-five minutes and then I could finally take a breath and say, from my phone, where I can, you know, get Wi-Fi is, here's the situation. We don't have power, we assess the situation, we'll keep you in the loop. So, that's just my perspective. But Mike, Mike was aware and Dave is talking to my other ear like, I was supposed to say nine fifteen and I'm going, it ain't going to be nine fifteen. But-
So if there's any other questions, I'd be happy to answer it. And it, to me, the key thing was, Dan's alluding to it, we won't get into it in public, but there was an additional question of security that we needed time to flush out and the public, you know, we have to do our job and make sure that kids are safe. And you have this thing unfolding and it's like, what is that thing? And what is the impact of that thing? And that took time to figure out also. So none of it was smooth and easy. But I just come back to again, you know, the, I mean, the allegation that not communicating erodes trust. We're working hard to take care of the kids. Number one priority. That's the number one priority. And, you know, people do have to trust us, that that is always at the heart. Dan's a father, I'm a father, we're not doing anything but making sure that the, somebody else's babies are okay. That's the bottom line. And all the energy has to go into that.
I'm glad you were able to speak to parents who were dropping them off because I, I know I would have, I probably would have had questions, questions if I was one of those parents. But, you know, it's good to hear that you were able to reassure them and say, yep, we're going to take them and keep them safe.
And it was, everything happened less than quarter mile from school.
Yeah.
And even though you couldn't see it from pulling in-
Yeah.
You just knew something was going on. So I just need to, we're going to save, and basically the kids, hey, you, I want you to go right into the gym. And if you're there, I didn't count, but we probably had fifteen staff out on the sidewalk that as the percentage of, you know, the kids saturated into the gym, they kind of drifted into the gym. So we always kind of had those kids. And then towards the end of the day too, you know, power comes on, everything's normal. And then at some point, I look back and go, I don't know, car is going by. And so I drove around and realized there was a blockade and I did the loop so I could say like, hey, if you're coming for pickup. And I had to talk to the cop and say, hey, just so you know, in about twenty minutes, you know, a lot of cars coming here, so you may want to move your cruiser because, and so we coordinated that. And then I could see, you know, there was, because they had the block, the blockade at, at Hillcrest and then I kind of just went around to find out how far you could go and then call more from the road and tell her to write an email and say like, this is what you're going to do. And it made no sense, but you know, we figured, you know, we figured out how to get them. And after all of that, we only had one student that we needed to call on because when I drove and I knew where the student lived, I said, they can go to the house. And the bus said, I can't take her home. I said, yeah, you can, I just drove. He goes, yeah, but you can take your car through the library parking lot. I can't take this thing through the library parking lot, I'd be stuck. And I went, all right, fine. Pulled her in, called the parents, I'm like, yeah, no, I totally understand. And they came and picked her up and, of course, it's come by.
All the way around.
And I will say, one other thing the board should understand is our staff did exactly what they should have done. They were, you know, when I got to GMS and walked around, the kids, by the way, this is an adventure. They were having a grand time walking down the hall with their flashlights. The teachers were doing exactly what they should be doing. They, you know, obviously weren't able to use some of the technology that day, but it's okay. It, it was fine. It really was a funny thing. And they'll remember it the rest of their lives, the kids. Remember the day the power went out? It'll be one of the things-
And I will tell you that the power came on, like at first we were like, you know what? They can use the bathrooms, but at some point, we're going to realize that we don't have power to power up the exhaust fans. And the power came on right when you started to notice that, that impact and so we were good to go.
I've had a flashback.
Yeah.
Oh yeah, but the bathroom, it looked like, we gave them the little flashlights to go in and they're elementary kids, so it looked like a disco.
My only comment on all this, right, and very glad we had this discussion tonight, so thank you to the both of you. I know the term emergency has been used in some of the email exchanges and I agree, it's not a true emergency in the sense that something very serious was happening at the school. I appreciate that. I think emergency in my mind is we have an emergency protocol, right? Call it a different level within that protocol, but do we have a protocol for these events, for these situations? At least something to refer to? Or can we use this as an opportunity to create a protocol so we have something to refer to? Because we've had a lot of these one-off events in recent years.
Way too many.
Right? I mean, I can think of five sitting here, right? Right? So it's more than just these one-off events. It's, it seems to be reoccurring, so what are we doing about it?
Yeah.
What can we document?
We absolutely-
I can, I can tell you only, and I don't mean to get in a soapbox.
To this, not for like the serious, not like, you know, there's an active, none of that.
No, but we have, we have evacuation plans. We have, I mean, that's why, that's why you knew what to do in that situation.
Well, and I'm actually, I'm going to partially agree with Andrew because I've had this conversation with members of like state homeland security because it, it is all based on basically a template that they give us that we individualize. But I, I have said to more than one of them, we're writing this document for a bunch of events that have a very low likelihood of happening. Why isn't there something in here that plans for loss of resources or power outage or water? These are the things that I've, I've dealt with, power outage. Why don't we spell these things out? But you go to that template and they always go, yeah, no, you're right. And then there's a template comes out and they never have things like, you know, like, what do we do when there's a wildlife emergency or something like that? They just go, oh, revert back to reverse. No, but like that's different, like when I say reverse evacuation, it should be different because there's a coyote as opposed to like an actual threat, you know, like-
Right, yeah.
But you're, you're hitting on something and I've, I've tried to, but no, we don't have a, a protocol for loss of water, loss of power, you know, what to do.
So-
There's a general protocol, but I also tell you that every incident like that is, is going to be slightly different. And even this one, there'd be no one to do like, what to do when kids are already on the buses and the parents are arriving and you lose power, you know, but-
We added a power outage annex in our emergency operation plan after last year at LMS. And so there is an annex, but again, it's generic. And so, you know, if the power goes out at four AM, that's a very different scenario than if it goes out at seven forty. So it, all of those things are, yeah, you have the template, but putting it in operation is going to depend on timing and all the other factors.
But I will say, with that, there are, there are recurring themes and concepts in there, which is, I'll use the word, distance from threat, which is like the term. So that's like where we have the actual situation, get the kids away from them. Containment as much as you can, keep them on the buses, you know, resist movement. We kept them on the buses because to get them off creates movement. Keep them on the bus until they're safe. So like, there are these themes that apply to almost every situation, which we did rely on without thinking because at this point, through the drills, through the preparation, through the planning, it's more instinctual than, than it is anything like that, as well as all hands on deck. So, you know, all hands on deck, we dealt with the same way, it almost, it, it worked the same way with the power outage as it did last year when there was the fender bender at the entrance, as it did the day before Christmas break when it was like monsoon weather, like it, it kind of, when you can, you can say these terms and everyone kind of knows, I know where I need to be and generally what I need to be doing. So we did rely on some of that, even if there wasn't explicit plan for that kind of situation.
And I think also, just to chime in, sorry, from that row over here, I think that in the emergency situation, as Dan's talked about, as we've experienced, our number one priority is keeping those kids safe and keeping the lid on what's happening with the children and the staff and the people in the building. And so sometimes though parents want that communication instantly, sometimes we have to make sure that the safety is happening first before that communication can go out so that we don't get rushed, so that we don't get a whole line of people coming to dismiss and when you're trying to secure that safety situation.
Except if there's no communication, that people are going to come to the school. I mean, that happened at the drill. A, a parent came in, she heard that the high school had its thing, she came to get her kid at the middle school before that drill happened.
Oh, really?
Yeah. She, she, somebody told her, they're doing the drill this morning, she goes, I know, that's why I'm here, to take her. So you, you, the earlier you communicate, even if it's not full information, is probably going to be better than, somebody hears about it, you're going to have a bunch of folks coming to the door.
Well, and I think what was unique with this was, this situation was unfolding during drop-off where you have, I don't know, a quarter of your parents coming through your parking lot and physically seeing emergency lights and-
Yeah, it was almost, I can't remember what was the, well, the fender bender this fall or last spring, it's the same thing that happened at the entrance and, you know.
And word of mouth is going to get around of, you know, just in a small town, that this, this is happening, this is what's going on. So, you know, I will say, I heard incredibly positive things about GMS staff. So, um, you know, I will say, I heard incredibly positive things about GMS staff. I think.
They're incredible in this, in these situations.
They really.
Yeah, I saw a lot on Facebook.
So top-notch, I mean, kudos to them, kudos to you for leading them, because, um, I know a lot of parents who may have felt, um, a little uneasy, felt better knowing that their kids were in their care.
I'm giving all the credit to them, because I can't say this is, how many times this has happened, it's something at, at drop-off. And I just put it in a, you know, like, can we get all hands on deck or even say, sometimes I haven't even said anything. And I get into the zone, I get into the focus of doing things, and I look around and I realize how much is happening just naturally behind me. So they're, they're incredible, but especially so in these kind of, I don't want to use the right word, but, you know, times of need.
Unusual situations.
Unusual situations, where they need to rise, they do every single time.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Any other questions?
Nope.
Alright, moving on to business and operations. This is our second meeting of the month, so we have our financial and operations report. Mr. Totten.
Alright, great, thanks. Uh, so North Branch, April invoice is in there, uh, about thirty-five thousand. For some reason, that work didn't really happen in April most of it, but North Branch held the bills for a little bit. Not quite sure exactly why, but we, we pay them when they ask us to pay them and, and they put it on the April invoice and we paid then. Um, I don't know if there's any questions about the renovations or the financial reports before I move on to the next item?
Yes, on the renovations, one of the things that we had talked about, probably going back a couple of months at this point, is a consideration for a circuit breaker at LMS. Where does that stand?
So it's going through the electrical engineers to, um, because of the size of the building, they have to kind of design what it would look like with, with the equipment that's in there type of thing. So they're currently, um, designing it, and then with that design will come a price, um, for if we chose to go forward, what it would cost us.
And are we, what's the design cost to the district?
Fifteen hundred?
Yeah.
I think it was around fifteen hundred.
I was going to say under two, so.
Yep.
Um, solar update? I, I heard that was talked about at facilities, but I didn't, I didn't catch the update. I didn't watch that part, so. Where are we with solar?
So solar is, I believe, start, will start going on the roof in, at July, August. So as far as, um, the array going on, on the roof, and then the next thing is obviously to hook it into our system. So we have the option of either using EverSource or solar. And that's where the problem is, because they have to buy a new main shut-off, and that is not going to be expected to come in until, um, December at this point. So they're looking for workarounds, they're looking to see if they can purchase it anywhere else. Um, again, like, like, we are not alone in this. There are new buildings of larger sizes. It's not impacting houses, but buildings of larger sizes, whether it be apartments or dorms, they're empty as they wait for these bigger type of purchases, these bigger switches to come in. Um, so we have joined the waiting, um, at this point. So, but they're, they're looking to see what type of workarounds they have. Can, can we set up a different way? Um, can we set up in a way where we can still use the solar that the arrays will be having? And, and, um, maybe not necessarily go towards a battery storage at that time, but at least go towards the, the current consumption at like ten AM on, on a Tuesday type of thing. Uh, so phone calls are happening with that, uh, but we should start seeing solar arrays go on the roof in July.
So if you don't have that switch, you're not going to be able to store any of the power that you generate over the course of the summer?
We won't be able, no, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to bring it, even if we stored it, we wouldn't be able to put it anywhere. So I think we probably could store it, but then it wouldn't go anywhere.
I mean, that, that erodes at least any of the savings that was presented to the voters for this, for the solar model. Right? Because if we were planning on that system being live, certainly during the summer, right? That's factored into the initial proposal that went to the voters.
So it, it erodes the savings.
When do we think the system's going to be live and actually connected?
So, uh, we had a meeting a year ago, June, and that's when it was determined, we need this switch in order to tie everything together. So that was where our solar, um, consultant and, and designer worked with Liberty Electric, who is the subcontractor for North Branch. And so they had a conversation, said, this is what we need. Uh, Jack placed the order, and it came back to say that, uh, that switch is made by one company in Missouri, and it will be manufactured in December of twenty-three. And so then when it's manufactured, it'll be shipped and it will be installed at that point. So it's literally, it will be eighteen months out. I mean, this is the kind of thing we've been talking about, but it's eighteen months out from the time that it was identified as what was necessary to do it. Um, and so.
So we have a switch coming in in December-ish this year, right? And then it will take probably two, three months anyways to get it inspected and then connected and turned on?
I don't think so. I think, uh, everything will be done and ready to go, and then as soon as they install it, um, you know, hopefully over the holiday break, that that's when the school's not in use, you know, so we don't have to disrupt anything else at the middle school.
I just understand that that process, even though you have it ready to go, it takes, it can take many weeks for it to be okayed and approved, then be able to use. So I, I don't know that it's realistic to say it's going to be live in December, you know?
Perhaps so. I know that, um, the Liberty and, um, Caves Group, um, Interspective are coordinating with EverSource and the town, because like you said, all that permitting, all that permission has to happen. So I believe that it can be done earlier than that, but it's up to them to decide, right? They, they'll, they're the ones who will allow that to be thrown and turned on.
So who, so the town has to bless that and EverSource has to bless that?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of danger. You have a generation plant on the roof of the building. And there's a lot of danger back to EverSource if this switch allowed current to get back on the network, um, that the line crews weren't aware of, right? So there's, there is a lot of coordination around that. What I'm hoping, Andrew, is that that's being pre-coordinated and everybody's in agreement, but I, I don't know that. So you could be right. It could take additional time beyond the installation of the switch to allow us to use the switch.
Yeah.
Um, but I, I can tell you, in our meetings, I'm advocating exactly what you are saying, which is, this isn't what we promised the taxpayers. You know, there has to be a workaround. There has to be a way that we can get this up and going and take advantage of, um, the solar array that's on the roof. And that's what the engineers are working to come up, is there another way to do it? And I want to begin to understand, other than there was a little bit of energy around, we could, and they started talking in a way that they've got to figure that out. They're the experts in it. And so there could be a workaround, but I wouldn't guarantee it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just asking the questions, right? I'm sensitive to now running an approximately eighty thousand square foot building for a year and a half on electric.
And I asked the question of, you know, so why is it that it's this one switch manufactured in Missouri? That is there anybody else in the world perhaps who makes a switch that's similar to that that we can get? I, I understand that, you know, we might want to spec this one, but are there other options?
Maybe we should buy two, so we have a backup, because it'll be hard to get a replacement when that breaks, right? I mean.
Hopefully it won't break, but, uh, yeah.
Having a lot of one-off conversations.
I was just going to say, I don't jinx it.
Actually, you did break a switch.
We did break a switch, but that bad boy lasted like eighty-two years.
But that's the update on solar and where, where we are with it. So, um, we have had, even though we're no longer meeting weekly with every, um, sorry, with North Branch, we have kept monthly meetings with North Branch to make sure we stay coordinated. Solar's been a part of that, um, so.
We met in between the monthly meetings with solar as well, just to make sure that everyone was getting the information that they needed. So we are progressing and we're not in a pause for other stuff as well.
You're just triggering my, my memory, actually. In the power purchasing, the PPA, am I saying that right, the term, right?
PPA.
There was a clause about the system having to be live by a certain date, was there not?
It talks about the, everything starts on substantial completion of, of it working. So it wouldn't be going, none of the countdowns start until it's functional. So.
That would be after it's approved by, in December or whenever it is, right?
Exactly.
That's kind of the tweaking period that was talked about, right? It's going to be live and then it's going to take some time to get it squared away.
So is there any relief in that contract, given these delays?
There, no, because the contract doesn't start till that point. So if, if the, if it's producing solar and we're able to use the solar, but we aren't at substantial completion, then now we can buy the solar off of Interspective instead of buying it off of EverSource. And it should be, should be cheaper, you know, to do that. Um, but that's again, if the solar's working while they're still kind of tweaking it, um, and, you know, during that time period, so.
Any other questions on that? You can move on to your next.
Alright, so different talks about documents that are over a hundred pages. One of those that we get every year is the budget report. Um, so looking at just different products, I was able to find something which I'm like, this is going to help out with that. Because we give out over a hundred pages and we say, let's talk about it, let's have good discussion about it. Let's kind of think back to what the budget was last year, what was spent type of thing. Um, what's instruction, what's personnel, and it's just a lot of information coming in. So if I could hook in.
Yeah, absolutely.
Last time I tried to hook in, it didn't keep it going the whole time, so let's hope it does this time. Alright, so. I am on, oh, nope. Oh, this is what it did to me last time. So. We might get five seconds of looking at it, unless you can hook in. So this, this is what it would look like. Um, so it's called Looker Studios, and, yeah, I don't know if.
Let me pull it up and see where I can, which link am I on though?
So you would have to go, I had shared it with you before. Unfortunately, I can't share it.
Oh, it's that.
Right now.
Nope, hang on. You shared Look, what's it called?
So you have to go into Looker Studio dot Google dot com. Does that come up with anything for you?
Looker.
Looker Studio.
Studio, this one? This one?
I need to share everything. Yeah, okay, so copy of Litchfield.
This one?
Yeah.
Yep.
Alright, perfect.
Alright, here we go, to the TV.
Can I run you up that? So here is the budget. Um, so if, if this was last October, I, and I knew about this, I would have presented it this way. So we have the budget for October, uh, school year twenty-four and twenty-three. So the budget we know, and the budget we're kind of looking to create. So what you can do here is, uh, you can set it up different ways. You, you can do different graphs and things like that. But let's say I wanted to look at instruction. So as soon as I click over here on instruction, everything is now based off of instruction. So we can see how much of the pie instruction goes to each of the schools, whether it be GMS, CHS, LMS, how much of it goes to personnel and non-personnel. And then we can come down here and kind of see more of the specifics as far as, okay. So here's how much we spent in middle school phys, uh, phys ed salaries in two thousand twenty-three, and this is how much we're projecting in twenty twenty-four. Um, and then as soon as you want to look at something else, you can just hit reset. So now if I wanted just to kind of focus in on the high school, I hit the high school, and let's say I want to focus in. So now every data on here goes to the high school. Let's say I want to do the high school and support services. Well, now I click over here, and now I'm high school support services. And let's say I want to focus on non-personnel for that, I click here. So you can kind of, you can narrow it down to how you want, and at the same time, you're getting a visual as well as some numbers. So, huh?
Can I export?
Can you export to?
Like if I want this view and I want to dump it in Excel?
I don't know that question. It's, it's coming off of a spreadsheet, which is dumped into there. So I don't think it necessarily exports back out. And the good news about this is that while I'm doing this, somebody else could be looking at it a different way. Um, and, you know, because different people are going to have different interests on there too. So you can, this is just one, one way that I set it up, but obviously you can, you can set it up differently as well. But my goal is to make it so a lot of people can look and kind of understand the budget. And a hundred and twenty pages is, is a tough start for that. Um, so I'll keep on working on this, see, see what I can do to hopefully make it, make it better.
I think it'll be, I think it'll be helpful too, for deliberative session and, and, you know, for presentations to the community too, for people who aren't necessarily looking line by line, um, and doing that kind of analysis. I think that would be really helpful for presentations.
Yeah.
Right? If you throw in actuals, because I know that's always a question.
Yeah, I thought about that, yeah, having a third one be actuals type of thing.
Good visual.
There's an opportunity to do the past three or four years, you know, in these comparisons. That's always, that's always a barometer that, that the budget committee uses as well.
Yeah, yeah, I think there's, if you go the past three or four years, I, I think you'd be starting to think about, okay, here's one page, and here's another page. Here's one page that only has like two years.
Yeah.
So it's, it's easier to digest, and here's a page that has five years if you want to kind of go.
Yeah, that's real, that's exactly what people want to see.
Yep. So I just want to show that, just so we can kind of see that we're hopefully moving in a direction that is going to be more beneficial to more people. Alright, so the next thing I have on there is, there was a question last week about adequacy aid, or two weeks ago, three, three weeks ago, whenever we met and swept. Um, so that's something that's been in the papers too, as there is a lawsuit towards the state, um, as far as, alright, you're, you give out adequacy aid of about thirty-eight hundred dollars per student as a base rate. Is that really adequate for education? So my point isn't to go any political at all. I, I think, if you ask me real quickly, is that adequate for education? The answer would be no. Um, but there was a question as far as, is that aid changing? Because some towns are finding that they're getting more money, or a different amount of money than they were expecting. Um, it's not really changing. So what happened this year was that the state went from every year, they're mandated to raise three hundred and sixty-three million dollars in swept taxes. And they decided to, um, give the towns a break by raising two hundred and sixty-three million dollars in swept taxes. So I don't know if you can actually project that.
I can reject this. Hang on.
Go back to it.
What is it called?
Swept.
Swept.
Statewide education property tax.
So this is on top, on top of our local property tax?
This is, when you, when you see your tax breakdown, there's the local tax, there's a county tax, but there's a, they call it the statewide.
Just got them the other day.
Yeah. So I'll actually, I'll back up a little bit before that. So every year, schools receive money from the state for education.
Thank you. I'm going to blow it up, because I can't read that across the room.
So that money that we receive in Litchfield is a combination of every student that we have, um, gets about thirty-eight hundred dollars from the state. Now, there's also an additional amount that goes for students who qualify for free or reduced. Uh, additional amount that goes for special ed students, and a, and a student could get both of those. An additional amount that goes for English language learners. So that, again, that's someone whose English isn't their first language, might not even be their second language. It could be their third or fourth type of thing. So, and then an additional amount for a third grade student who did not get proficient in the third grade reading. Um, but for that to happen, they could not be an ELL special ed or free or reduced lunch. So that gets calculated every year, and every school then gets an adequacy amount. So you can see this off to the left on this table. Now, in two thousand twelve, I think it was, they made changes to the funding, which for property, what they call property poor towns, so towns that, that don't have a big property base, whether it be because they don't live by the ocean, by a lake, or they don't have a lot of businesses in there, uh, they were going to be negatively impacted by this. So what they did was they, they said, okay, we're going to keep a stabilization grant, so those towns aren't negatively impacted by this change. So Litchfield is one of those towns that, that get it. So we get our adequacy, which is based on our students, and then we get the stabilization grant, which was based on a two thousand and twelve decision. You add those up together, that's how much we get from the state. So every year. Now, the state gives us money in two ways. One way is the swept tax, um, which is a statewide education property tax. So that's part of raising that three hundred and sixty-three million. So they look at the valuation of the state, like three years prior, and they simply divide the three hundred and sixty-three million by the total valuation of property in the state, and then you get a per thousand rate. And then the, the towns get this, and they use their valuation, which is usually like that same year or a year earlier, and then they break that out to a town, um, per thousand rate. So when taxpayers see the swept, they're, they're thinking of it as a, a tax for the school, where the state is thinking of it as a state tax. So adequacy aid is based on your students, swept tax is based on your property. So there, there's no correlation from swept to school at all. Swept is a state tax, which is raised locally and retained locally. Um, so myself as a taxpayer, when I see swept, I'm thinking it's, it's, it's going towards, it's like more of a school tax, but by definition, it's a state tax. It's how, it's one of the ways that the state pays for their, for their adequacy education that they give to each town. So you have your total adequacy aid, then you subtract out your swept, um, because that's state tax that's raised locally, and what you have left over is adequacy aid, which you get from the state. So the state is giving us, this year they gave us five million nine hundred and fifty-two thousand two hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Now this year, instead of raising three hundred and sixty-three million in swept taxes, they raised two hundred and sixty-three. Now, they understand that that's a benefit for local taxpayers, because every taxpayer is now paying less towards that. They still have to give us the same amount in adequacy aid, so that's why the swept went down this year and adequacy from the state went up. So for us, next year, we're projected to have our, our total adequacy aid go down by about twenty-five thousand dollars, um, but are swept to go back up, because it was a one-time tax break for, for the state. Now, there are some towns that, um, are getting extra money in a way this year. So those would be your property rich towns, like a Wolfboro. So, and I'm going to use not Wolfboro numbers, but if you think about Wolfboro, they're, they're on the lake. Um, they have less students than houses, because they have a lot of vacation homes, and a lot of vacation homes are paying a higher property tax type of thing. So let's say in Wolfboro, these aren't their numbers, let's say in a regular year, they had adequacy aid that amounted to two million, again, based on their students. Now, based on their share of New Hampshire property taxes, they might. Now, based on their share of New Hampshire property taxes, they might have had a swept tax, which they had to do of six point five million. Now, the swept tax is over the adequacy aid. That money doesn't go to other towns. It stays in Wolfboro. It used to go to other towns, but it doesn't do that anymore. So this year, let's say, for example, when they were raising two hundred and sixty-three million, again, just examples, their adequacy would have been two million, but their swept would have been less, would have been, let's say, four point five million. So they were used to getting a swept of six point five. And now they're getting a swept of, of four point five for the same numbers type of thing. Or if they didn't go down to two hundred and sixty-three million, they would have got swept to four point five. So the state, their, their goal wasn't to reduce the amount going to schools from the state. And swept is the state. So now these property rich towns, for this example, where they should have been getting six point five million in swept, or they would have been raising six point five, they're raising four point five. That's state tax again. So the state then has to bump in another two million towards them. So those are the towns that might be being surprised a little bit by saying, oh, I wasn't expecting this, this extra money coming in. But again, it's a state tax and the state is saying, we're not reducing our help to you. So if, if they allowed the swept in Wolfboro to go under four point five million, Wolfboro would have gotten less. So they have to bump it back up. So that's the only real people that, that are, that I see are getting extra or unexpected swept aid this year. We're getting exactly what we projected and for us to get. Now, every two years, they use a consumer price index to adjust the amount that's going to go per student, per free reduced lunch. So you can see next year, it has been adjusted up because inflation has gone up. Now, next year, we're expected to get less, but again, a lot of it is based on students. So with declining enrollment, even if the amount that they're giving you per student goes up, you have less students.
So I'm looking at the green column, right? In simple, in simple terms.
Yep.
So seven million three seventy is this year, seven million three forty-five is what we're projecting for next year.
Yep. So I know this is, this is a lot, but I want to get out there for a couple of reasons. One, people asked about it and who was being surprised by extra adequacy aid. It's not us. We're not being surprised. And two, because it's out in the papers quite a bit as well, as far as funding for New Hampshire schools.
Thank you.
And I know it's, it's a lot, so definitely feel free to follow up with any emails as well as you kind of think about it more. And then the last thing I have on my agenda, which I did add, I guess today, was we're starting to get closer to understanding our fund balance for the year. So this is definitely.
I'm sorry, is there a live link to this?
There, there is not a live link. So let me look at it a little bit more then I'll share something out after we go tonight. Can I share something with you? And you can pull that up.
I can. You know a guy who can buy you a new computer?
This is a new computer. Our newer computer. All right, let me send this. So tale of, of two things. We have the fact that we've been looking to hire, we've been advertising to hire, paras, different other positions, even, even the summer, they were looking to hire a special ed teacher at the middle school. They weren't able to find anybody. The decision was, we, we don't have anybody to hire. And it was, it was a newer position, an added on position. So they decided just to kind of go with what they had. We tried to hire a halftime PE teacher. That wasn't happening. My understanding is that with enrollment, you guys dropped down by one kindergarten teacher that wasn't in the budget. So that money didn't get spent. Then we had, you know, people who left that we didn't replace. When Michelle left, we, we didn't replace her position. And then we had all of the assistants or paras that we weren't able to hire throughout the year. Even though the attempt was always there to hire. We did not say no at all when anybody brought me anything, can we hire it? Yep, we can hire. This person needs a couple hours of overtime to do this. Yep, give them that overtime to do that type of thing. So there was no, no this year. Of course, everything that was asked was reasonable as well. So we have, on one hand, we have a lot of positions that weren't able to be hired, which has quite a bit of a shortfall as far as budget for personnel and what we ended up spending for personnel. On the other side, we have the non-personnel costs, which some things beyond people's real knowledge at the time of budgeting went up. So electric, you know, we're probably around a hundred and twenty-four thousand over than what was budgeted. Propane, we're, we're up in that too. Out of district placement, we're up in that again, partially that was because that was cut. So we're, we're up about ninety-four thousand in that. Out of district transportation, about thirty or forty thousand in, in that. You know, the municipal lease, you know, we were hoping to use the, the savings to bridge the gap between the three hu, three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollar payment and the hundred and sixty-seven thousand that was budgeted for. That didn't happen. You know, those, those savings, what not only did not happen, but they were replaced by rising energy costs. So we have several non-personnel costs that went up quite a bit. So that budget is tight. The personnel budget, not so tight. So let me share this. I haven't shared it, sorry. So as Holly looked at the personnel budget, I looked at it in, in a different way, just to kind of check up on things. We're both expecting the personnel budget to come in roughly nine hundred, nine hundred and fifty thousand under budget. So that's the personnel budget. The non-personnel budget, we, we're, what we're doing is we're working through encumbrances now, which is a typical thing to do at this time of year. So at the beginning of the year, you know, we put in for, this is how much we're going to spend on buses and we encumber it type of thing. Or this is how much we're going to spend on fuel, we encumber it. Or we're going to buy the, these textbooks. Well, maybe instead of buying ten textbooks, they only bought seven type of thing. So we're working through the encumbrances to see what's not going to be bought. But again, that's going to be much tighter. So we might end up being fifty thousand over in, in that line. We might end up being close to zero in that line. We might be around ten thousand, a hundred thousand. But that's definitely a much tighter budget. So if we use, again, a projection that, that could be a million or more or less in, in personnel. You know, we got to get through this time to get more of the exact. And more of a flat non-personnel, I just use nine hundred thousand as a starting point up here. So where does that nine hundred thousand go? So, you know, eventually things go back to reduce taxpayers. You know, and, and that's, that's a good place for it to go. Before that though, there are, there are knowns. The, the one known is that for our capital projects fund this year, the revenue was not going to meet expenses. That hasn't been a surprise since we started talking about this with everybody in August, September. So we expect that to be around a hundred and sixteen thousand. So again, we don't have a choice. We have to transfer that over at that point. The next thing is a choice. The next sixty thousand is what we're, what we're spending on elementary work, which would typically come from the capital improvement expendable trust fund. So we could take that from that. Or we, we, you guys can make the decision, well, with this amount of fund balance, maybe we want to leave more in there and take it from the fund balance. That, that one's a choice. We could go either way on that one. We talked about a month or so ago about expenses going over revenue in food service. It was going to most likely deplete the hundred and twenty-seven thousand fund balance that we had. And worst case scenario, we, we thought we would need maybe like another fifty thousand. So the good news is, is since we've adjusted the price for, for lunch and for breakfast, we actually sold like four more meals per day than before the adjustment. So the parents, I, I think they, they, you know, we, we advertised it. I'm, I'm sure some parents didn't see it, but I'm sure other parents who saw it said, well, it's probably reasonable with what I'm paying when, when I go out to eat for other things as well. And they need to cover their expenses. So, and Lauren and the leads and, and the crew have been doing a, a great job of just trying to use the inventory they have on hand to build the June menu. So we're, we're hoping to end, you know, without ordering as much. We already got some good news. She got some good news for next year as far as paper products. The bids are down about thirty percent. So hopefully, I, I think we could, we all need food prices to go down. I know I do. My, my family, I, I think we all would benefit from food prices going down. And, and there's talk that maybe that, those are starting to creep down a little bit as well. But so we, we talked about a worst case scenario of about fifty thousand that we would have to cover this year. So that's, that's in there as well. Then I'm going to skip over the next two for now. Then there is what got voted on in the warrant articles in March. And it talked about a percentage up to the max. What's shown there is the max because we will be able to fund the, the max of it. So we would have a hundred and twenty-five thousand going back into the building maintenance capital reserve fund. A hundred and twenty-five thousand going into the improvements, capital improvements expendable trust fund. A hundred thousand going into the newly created employee benefits reserve fund. So those would get fully funded. I'm going to jump back up to the two. Now, every year, different schools encumber money to, to be used, you, you know, as the summer goes on. Now, something what, what I want some guidance on is because my, my goal right now is to return as much to the taxpayers as possible with, with knowing what happened last year. That's, that's my goal. Now, at the same time I, I say that, I'm also responsible, we're responsible for the students in front of ourselves. And you, you know, I loved hearing the full sentences. I loved how, hearing how the kids talked today. What got me a little bit was the secret room for the bad guys. So. I've always been part of district emergency response teams. So for me, it's, it's, and we, we've used Alice at my past school as well. So a key thing to Alice is communication. So right now, and we're, it's great working with John Burnell. He is fantastic. He's very helpful. So we were able to get the safe grant to purchase some radios. And our thought was, oh, they approved our first safe grant. They're going to approve our second safe grant. But remember, they didn't approve any second safe grant that didn't go to access control. So we didn't know that beforehand. We found that out afterwards. So we went for, for the ability to get less radio. So right now at the high school, they're solely using the new radios, but they don't have enough. The middle school has a group of people using the new radios and a group of people using the old radios. The old radios and the new radios don't talk to each other. The new radios do a much better job of talking to the other schools and police and fire. So that's a key part of the new radios.
That's what Andrew, not Andrew, Peter, they, we got these new radios so you, we can talk all at once after. Instead of being able to just communicate in GMS, you can communicate with all three schools plus police and fire, which is huge. So if your phones go down, they, everyone can talk.
So GMS, we had to stay on the old radios because of how spread out GMS is, because of the ages of the kids, because of the amount of entryways into GMS and the fact that windows are also entryways into GMS. You need a lot more radios there. They need thirty radios, you know, a minimum of thirty radios.
Who gets the radios? I'm sorry. Do all teachers get radios?
It wouldn't be all teachers, but you, you know, you definitely have them in the portables. You have them by, you know, sometimes the team leaders get them, the people who are going out to recess or other areas.
Special educators with flight risk kids and stuff, yeah.
Exactly. Yeah, you definitely want to give them to, to the, those people as well. So we have a need for forty-eight more radios. So those forty-eight more radios, thirty at GMS, ten at LMS, eight at CHS. That's what those staff, not me, that's what those staff believe that they need to get to a good point. Working with John Burnell, that would be about forty-nine thousand four hundred. We have eight thousand three hundred from the safe grant still to use for GMS radios. So that's why you're not seeing the forty-nine thousand, you're seeing the forty-two thousand up there. So that is a hundred percent to do in my, my mind with safety. Both for the small things and for the, and for the unfortunate and things that none of us want to think about things. The next thing on there is the blue lights. So what this would do is, again, it's all about communication. I, I wish it wasn't about like, you know, every ten seconds counts for, for, for this or for that. And I, I don't want to put it out there for a kid or, you know, but like, it, it does. So where is the hardest place to communicate? Well, in the, in the rooms that are the loudest. Loudspeaker radio doesn't always do great in, in a gym when the kids are running and, and yelling. Cafeteria where the kids are getting some energy out and, and talking. Or an auditorium. So this would allow us to put blue lights in each of those. Obviously auditoriums just at the high school, as well as bump up the amount of panic buttons we get. So these are portable panic buttons where you can press the button, blue lights go. It also notifies the police at that point as well. So both things happen at the same time. And then it would give us two pull stations in the school where, you know, anybody who noticed something could, like a fire alarm, pull that. That would signify the blue lights to go and for the police to be notified of what's going on. So that's sixteen thousand. I think it says five hundred up there. I see that as, as a good point. I, I see maybe bumping up a little bit each year there as well. But I want to get us to a good point where, where people are feeling more comfortable with getting the information in a timely manner and then being able to communicate to the people that they need to in a timely manner. So that's why those are on there. And then you can see I left a couple of spaces. I, I, we, we want some direction as far as like, where do we go? But I also want to scroll down a little bit as well. Because part of what leads into a fund balance is not, not spending as much as your budget. But the other part is excess revenue that comes in. So we can see from those subtractions, we get to the two hundred and sixty-five thousand five hundred. Well, on that, we have some excess revenue. Part of it, we, we talked about way back in budgeting and that's House Bill twelve twenty-one. So the state had extra money and their decision was, let's get that money back to the taxpayers. Now, the towns could either give it back in this current taxing or next year. We kind of, we didn't know where we were going to be at the end of this year. So we kind of punted to now because we thought, well, maybe we weren't going to be able to give the taxpayers back anything possibly. Especially if we hired those positions. And we said, this will at least allow us to give it back to the taxpayers. So that, that bumps up. So that, that would go to reducing taxes. And then we have the revenue over expected as well. So chunks of that, two hundred to one thousand are special ed aid. So every special ed student who, whose expense that's associated with that student is over three and a half times the state average, the state starts chipping in money at that point. So think about like our, our students who are residentially placed with a bus that transports them, you know, you know, those students are above that three and a half percent. So we got about, I think it was about a hundred and ten thousand back. And we had, we, working with the state, we had budgeted for about sixty-five thousand of that. So that's in addition to what we thought. Part of those numbers too are the booster pump. So, you know, the booster pump, which we paid for, well, there's, there's that revenue as well as the, the LMS impact fees as well. So that, that's unexpected revenue that came in for there. And the booster pump is shown in the expenses and is an expense. And the LMS municipal lease was an expense as well. So if we look at the excess revenue, that takes us to a little less than six hundred thousand. And again, some of these numbers are concrete numbers as far as House Bill twelve twenty-one. And some of these numbers will fluctuate as far as like, how much are we truly going to be under in personnel? And what are we truly going to be in non-personnel? But as far, you, you know, I don't think, as we take in the whole year and we realize, even though we've been trying to hire custodians, we haven't been able to do it. Trying to hire pairs, we haven't been able to do it. I think that amount of personnel kind of makes sense. And then not having a lot left over non-personnel also makes sense with the increased expenses that we had. So everything's kind of matching once, once we got going in the year, what, what we thought. At every point this year, I was hoping we'd be able to hire more paras. But we're not alone in that. So. And I don't think it's, unfortunately, I don't think that's going to get easier. I think we are, if, if. I think we are, if you look at, I, I think Litchfield could be a great place for people to work if they wanna come and be a para. You know, definitely apply this summer, you know, it's great to start off a school year as a para as well. It's definitely harder coming in as, as the year gets on, but you know, people are thinking about it, it would be great to, to get them in, get them applying, get them, you know, you definitely have your pick of school, whether you wanna work at the elementary, middle or high, and that's not always the case. Sometimes schools are only looking at an elementary level or middle level, where right now, we're, we're looking in all levels too. So, those are the numbers that I wanted to get out to people. And again, looking for, for, for feedback. First of all, feedback, and again, I don't, we don't need this feedback right now, it's definitely, I'm thinking about it, the, the three things that I, that I would like feedback on is, do we wanna use the expected fund balance to cover the roughly sixty thousand that are going towards elementary expenses as we, you know, kinda plan out a new GMS or new elementary school? Or do we want to take that from the capital improvement expendable trust fund? Either one's an option. Do we want to fund the radios and the blue lights or not? And, and what else do you, are, are we looking to give back as much in taxes as we want? Or is there anything else that we want to look to fund?
Can you scroll back up, please?
I am one, I am one hundred percent in support of communication upgrades across all schools in a blue light system, a hundred percent in this day and age, unfortunately. That's just my two cents.
Yeah, I have no, I have no issues with either one of those. I think sixty thousand for the elementary planning, I'd rather use the money that the taxpayers have already put aside as opposed to taking out of the general fund. That's just my two cents. But one of the things I'd like to at least consider as a board is we've heard a lot about special services and the, the overspend or the demand on special services, and this is an opportunity, I think, to look at that fund specifically. And maybe there's an opportunity to transfer a little bit of that excess while still returning quite a, quite a nice number back to the taxpayers.
I, I, I agree, I think it's always good to bump up the special ed, but I don't believe we can bump up the special ed.
It has to go to vote.
It has to go to vote. So anything that gets added to the capital reserve has to go through the vote of that, that, the tax.
Makes sense.
My other thought was, there were several end-of-year projects last year that we had approved, like the gator.
Yes.
And I think there was a, so playground equipment, and some of those needs may have been met over the course of the year with additional funds, but can we look back at those ones that we pulled back on? If I recall, I think the gator was only.
Eight grand.
Yeah, it wasn't.
Yeah, so the gator was la, last year, I think it was like, well, seventy-eight hundred, it's probably gone up since then.
Probably.
You know, I don't think, I, I think that's a good thing and that's something which, when we were working through the budget committee, they, they talked about, well, maybe you'll have money at the end of this year that you can just kinda put towards it as well. So it was the gator.
Gator, yeah.
It was, that's something that, that was approved that we didn't end up purchasing. The accessible swing glider at GMS, that's something that was talked about at multiple meetings and there, there ended up being no great option for that, so that was the slider that were like, that, that could, you know, so a student in a wheelchair could, could have a, a different piece, another piece of equipment that they could use to feel part of the group at, at recess, but things that, that we started looking into as well. If that's the case, do we have to fence around it? And if we fence around it, how does that make somebody feel like they're, they're part of it? And if we don't fence around it, is that gonna end to somebody else being, being hurt? You know, with, with that, you know, arm gap that you can put underneath that type of thing? As well as they, they came out and they looked at the, the area and, you know, it, it's a larger area. I think some of us might have seen it, so anyone who's been or something similar to it, Dartmouth and Manchester in front of their main campus has a playground now and it, it, some of us, yeah, no, I didn't have that, they've seen something similar. But there's, it takes up a decent amount of space and with where the septic tank is and where other things is, there's not a great spot to put it at GMS as well. So the thought was, well, what else can they do to kinda make things more accessible or purchase other things? So, that, that ended up being talked about a lot, I, I think the intent of it is, is great, but it never got purchased because of the other things that, that were brought up as well.
Were there, were there other pieces of equipment that were purchased? I feel like that was a discussion.
There were some other ones that were purchased.
And some other options, yeah.
Yep, yep. So, then there were some small things that got approved, the accountant's desk was approved. We decided, even though it was four hundred bucks, we said, nope. So we were able to search around in, in the buildings and Anne found a different desk. What, what happened?
She didn't buy one.
She didn't buy one. So we just, yep, she, she got one from a different school. Things that were asked but didn't get approved last year were five filing cabinets that were fireproof. So again, we are required to hold on to certain things for a certain amount of years and some of those things you're gonna want more protected than others. So the, that, last year, there was five filing cabinets that didn't get approved but were brought up, that was seventy-five hundred dollars.
Okay. That seems like a lot of money.
They're expensive.
They're expensive.
They're very heavy and very sturdy, but they're expensive.
Yeah.
And Doug, just remind us, like the gator, that was approved by the board. Is, is that money pending out there or did we close that out?
No, I thought we pulled it back.
We pulled it back.
We pulled it back, like two meetings later.
I don't know if we pulled it back or we just agreed that we weren't gonna spend it.
Cause I believe the next day, the guy who did the outside stuff had something on the accountant's desk, I'm ready to buy it.
So. I, I ask that clarity, cause I just don't, I, I'm not sure if we just said, hold on the gator and the money's encumbered, or is it not? So we.
I'll, I'll double check on that, but I believe the money is encumbered. And we just called up and we said, well, we know we're on the waiting list, but we decided not to purchase it.
And if it's encumbered, it's not an add to this, we were just releasing to it, right? So it's just.
Yeah, because this, the board, minus Peter, made those decisions in June, July to encumber, and then we made decisions to kinda alter many different things in August, September.
Yeah, things came to, can we go forward with the gator now?
Well, I don't think we're gonna vote on anything tonight.
Twenty-first, right? Is this coming back?
I just think of handicap people coming to graduation.
Yeah, we can talk more about next, two weeks from now and then again on June twenty-first, so.
I would think the votes would happen on June twenty-first, right? Our last scheduled meeting of this budget year?
Yeah.
Fine.
But I think this is, first of all, great news, to, to know that there is at least a fund balance, to know that we're gonna be able to return some money to the taxpayers, that's a significant amount of money. I guess my, my task would be, or my request would be, I know that all three schools operated not necess, not, were refused things, but operated this year on a very tight budget. Are there things out there? Usually they give ideas and that creates some of the end-of-year list that they feel like.
Shed being asked for last year.
There was a shed, yeah.
Somebody donated a shed right there.
Yeah. So I'm just wondering if we can gather that.
We would like to do that, so we, we meet with the admin team tomorrow, and we would definitely wanna present what they're thinking at the local level to, to the board as well. We just wanted to get your feel on things first, as far as like whether we're like, we, we just wanna return as much as we can, or we wanna listen and then kinda make decisions from there.
We do wanna return as much as we can and I wanna listen and hear what the needs are in the districts, yeah.
Okay.
But I, I'm, Andrew and I both said we are in favor of purchasing the walkie, I call them walkie-talkie, the radios in a blue light system.
My only question with blue lights is, is that open a can of worms with all sorts of electrical work that needs to be done? But that's a conversation for another day.
So we already have the blue light system now, we'd be adding on to it. So, and in the quote is.
Adding a blue light?
Multiple blue lights.
Multiple blue lights. So there is.
But we don't need to get into details.
Yeah, that's fine.
But, but I looked at, at it too, and there is labor and there, you know, to, to do the work as well. So that sixteen, sixteen hundred dollars, it should be pretty much all that work. And, and it's a local company, they've been in and out of the schools, so they kinda know about the run of the length of the cable type of thing.
To be clear, I'm fully supportive of those items as well, however, having sat through last year and had the conversation of we wanna do A, B, C, D, E and then have that pulled back, not by any fault of you, but I just wanna be cautious in approving projects this early until we get a little closer to year end, would be my initial reaction, but I wanna gather the research from admin in terms of what the need is.
Yeah, I mean, I'm hesitant to bring up that, we might have a nine hundred thousand at this point too, but everything is pointing towards it that way and we'll keep monitoring it as well, but.
Another just question.
Yep.
It feels a little, I don't, I don't know what the right word is, but we, we just received approval from the, the board of selectmen for the fifty thousand dollars for impact fees to reduce the payment, right, for the lease payment. Why, if we have such a surplus?
So, my why is because what, when I came into this position, I said, you know, I'm, I'm focusing on, on three groups of people. The kids, the staff, and all the residents. So, impact fees are either you, you use it or you lose it type of thing, and it's money that most people who have lived in town for a while didn't pay into, it's money for the new developments that that paid into. I wanna make sure that we can use that impact fee money because I think most of it's used within town, but not all of it, some of it has gone back to the developers.
We discussed that, yes, we've lost a lot.
And as we look at the middle school, you know, what other types of projects are we gonna have in the years coming forward that would, that would qualify? I don't know, cause we, we did a lot of the projects. And the, the fact is, you know, we're fully, in the budget, we, we fully funded the impact fees for, for next, the municipal lease for next year, and we, so we wouldn't be asking for it then, because then we'd be, at that point, we would be truly double dipping. So for, for me, it's how can we ensure for the, the townspeople that we are using those impact fees, knowing what's gonna be, you know, what, what would typically be happening for renovations in the middle school for the, the years to come?
I think I would agree with you more, like, on that, if it was, we were asking for taxpayer money to pay for these things, but with it being the impact fees, it feels a little different to me because, one, you have to have the right use for it, and I, two, I think the conversation requesting those impact fees happened long before we knew there was going to be a nine hundred thousand potentially. So, you know, I'm glad they were approved and I think we can move forward with that, but again, hopefully that just means more money is going back to the taxpayer.
Yeah, and I think as, as we separate out personnel from non-personnel money, I think sometimes a lot of the goals for, for a lot of towns is how much of that personnel money can we give back to the taxpayers? And, and the non-personnel money, sometimes you look to do other things with. What we don't have, I don't know where we're gonna end up with the non-personnel, we could be very close to, to zero on that, and that's a non-personnel type money.
For our next meeting, not for tonight, could you get, just provide us with a report or an update on what the balances were in all of our accounts pre the draw on all of them?
Yeah, it should be, it's, it's part of this report.
Right, I, I would just like to know what those numbers were, where we are today on those accounts.
It's in the monthly report.
That's in the monthly report.
That's in the budget report, cause one thing that, that the budget committee asked for was, can we have a month-by-month for that? So when I went back month-by-month and I started in July, we didn't take the money out until September, so you'll see the July and you'll see, so it's, it goes across and then at the bottom I start putting like major additions or subtractions from it. So it's, yep.
Any other questions for Mr. Totten or do you have anything else you wanted to present to us?
No, I know this is a longer one, but I wanna make sure.
It's, it's an important one.
Do you have one more?
Yep.
And, at a previous meeting, we talked about wifi, enhancing wifi at each of the buildings, right? And we talked about a cost associated, I believe, with LMS. Where are we with that?
So, that's something as we talked, we meet with the admin team tomorrow, we met with the directors on Tuesday, and we started sharing where we're gonna end up with fund balance on, on them, and so we started seeing their initial thoughts on things. And Chris brought that up too, he said, you know, I know what, something that's been out there is, we're going to be on a, a new server or, or new way of doing things at the high school and elementary school, would we want to do the middle school at the same time? So his quote that he was gonna go back and look at, cause he thought it was kinda high, the last quote he had seen was seventy thousand, but he said, I think that's, that's high. So he said, let me go back and get another quote. So he's working on that right now.
Okay, cause that could be an opportunity here to, just throwing that out there as an idea.
Yep.
Anything else?
Doug, one, one other thing I think is helpful is, so which number should we be focusing on? The two sixty-five or the six hundred thousand? In terms of return.
Six hundred's the bottom line.
So if it's the six hundred thousand, and then if you can just put that in perspective with the types of returns that we've seen over the last five or six years, right?
Yeah, so I put those right underneath there, so people could see.
Why didn't scroll down far enough?
Yeah, there we go.
So, a six hundred thousand dollar return exceeds.
Sizable.
Three out of four years, right?
That's a sizable return. Usually I think on the average, it's like three hundred grandish, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, twenty-twenty was just not your typical year, so.
Or COVID.
So that number's well above anything, but then, yeah, three hundred, that probably would be average.
Now, given that we discussed earlier that, you know, the solar array would not be generating savings for us until, you know, possibly January of next year, are there opportunities for us to buy things ahead so that we can meet our electric budget next year?
Prepay ever source?
I don't know.
Well, if you, if you buy other things out of this year's budget, out of the maintenance line, for example, you could free that money up to go toward that overage potentially.
Trying to think proactively.
You know, another thing, so I'd be remiss if I didn't toss out there, you know, we still have the can we're kicking, which is the eventual buyout of the solar array, right? So we knew there was a one-time purchase in year seven that we would figure out what to do with, and so that's just one more thing to toss out there as, it seems.
It's a portion of that.
See, I'm reluctant to raise that, hey, we wanna purchase the array that hasn't even been installed yet, but the point is, you do have that problem.
Like it to work before we buy.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you got that, but that is coming and that's one more thing.
Would we need to ask the voters for that? Like to put that into a separate account?
I think there's multiple ways that it could be funded, one of them would be doing that to.
What other account would it fit under?
Go into capital improvement?
It could go under one of the existing, but you run the danger.
Or sell it in six years from now though, to use that money for that.
Well, we could buy it sooner than that, right?
No, you have to let it go for the seven, I think seven years.
I'm just thinking maybe it's an opportunity to chip away at it.
Right.
Yeah.
Food for thought, I'm gonna move us on a little bit just because we're a little behind on our timing.
Doug, are you gonna send this out to us, so we can all sort of have it? Look at that, yep.
All right, so moving on to public minutes, is there a motion to approve the May third twenty-twenty-three minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there?
Second.
Any changes, any questions, any comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the May third twenty-twenty-three minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Aye.
All right, so four zero one. Moving on to new business, policy, we have the second reading of the dress code. Andrew had commented that the picture was missing, and so I believe that was added.
So, it's linked to a PDF that doesn't have it, it's the same picture that we've had all along.
Okay, so the picture's not changing.
Picture's not changing, cause it, it's, the description changed, but the picture's the same. And I do have it if somebody wants to see it, but it's the one that's in all the handbooks.
Yep. Questions or concerns?
My concern is the hats, was there, I don't recall a discussion on that at the past meeting, maybe I just missed it.
It's just me.
What was the discussion on the hats?
Yeah, so that, thank you for asking the question. I had served on that committee, and on that committee, there were student representatives and parent representatives from each school, and it was a specific request brought forward by LMS that because hats are allowed at CHS at teacher discretion, that it be considered at LMS as well. And so we discussed it, we went over what that would look like, they took, the assistant principals were also there, they took it back to their staff, they came back to the next meeting. The thought process at the elementary school was that it's too distracting, can be used to hit your friend, and it's just, for the elementary school, it would be too much. But for LMS, there was some feedback that was for, some feedback. But for LMS, there was some feedback that was for, some feedback against, most were, I don't care, or in the middle of it, or can see both sides of it, and so.
I'm a hundred percent against, on the record.
I know you are, and you were last time, too.
And I will tell you, oh, go ahead.
I just want to say, this was something that the students who served on this committee felt really passionate about. They, their parents spoke up for it, too. It was, again, I understand the concern about it, but we tried to write it in such a way that was, still allows teacher discretion, so that teacher can take, you know, if there's a summative going on and they don't want someone to have a hat, with the answers written underneath it, they can order that removal.
What about the ear pod that they can't see?
They can't because it doesn't cover the ears.
I'm telling you, as a middle school teacher, boys grow their hair right here, and they have ear pods in it, and I spent all day, because some kids don't listen to anything because they have ear pods in their ears.
But their hair is going to be long whether they have a hat on or not.
A hundred percent against. I was against it at CHS.
I'm interested in other board members.
Can I just clarify one point before we, so it's been allowed at CHS since the last, right? Because your comment was, but it's been allowed at CHS. Teachers were able to restrict it in their classroom if they had a concern about it, and that language has stayed. The only thing we've done, so an individual teacher who's concerned could say, take your hat off in my room. I don't like that. And the only thing that's added here is it is an extension now to LMS based on very passionate students in the committee, so just to clarify that point.
So is this an all or nothing thing, we accept this or we reject the whole thing? Or can we tweak it? Because I'm with, I think, Andrew and Liz, too, that hats should not be worn in school.
It's a board policy, so amendments can be made. I mean, it is a second reading, we've already read it once. So if we do make amendments tonight, we'd have to bring it back for another second reading. So we'd go back to the drawing board. I would just throw out there to say to people, we ask and we put out there that we want student opinions and feedback, we want parent opinions and feedback, we want staff opinion and feedback, we want admin opinion and feedback. We got it on this committee, and they were pretty clear about it.
How many admin, I mean, how many faculty were on this committee?
The faculty were represented by their assistant principals. Each one of them took this back to them.
How many faculty members? I am, I, kids wear hats on their way out the door. They see me, and they take their hat off. It's a respect issue that I was brought up with. But I want to know how many faculty members have a problem with it, because it's going to turn into a fight.
Correct me if I'm wrong, you were there, Martha represented, there were a few that had concerns. There were a few that were fine with it, but the most were fine, it's fine, whatever.
And the, everybody felt comfortable with this sentence. CHS and LMS staff may choose to restrict headwear in their classrooms for academic reasons.
How does that go?
It's up to the teacher.
When the kid says, I don't want to.
In their classroom.
Then they're.
No hats in my classroom, they say that, they set that expectation the first day. Your hat comes off when you come in. And I will say, we did ask.
Every kid just takes it off and says, okay, it doesn't take five minutes to wrestle.
Has it been an issue at the high school?
That's what I was going to say. Mr. Perez and the high school student rep who was there indicated that there actually aren't any teachers at the high school who restrict it, that it's fine, everyone's.
But what about the beanies they wear down to here? That's what they're.
If it covers the ears, they may not wear it.
And a teacher would ask them to take it off.
It says it in there that their ears are not covered.
And I will tell you, as a school teacher, when I ask kids to take their hats off, I have no backup from my administration, and teachers give up.
And that's why, if the people are ambivalent, they just say the hell out of it.
Yeah, it's not worth the fight.
It's the aggravation.
I see that side of it. For me, it, I don't consider it a respect thing, I think it's a adolescent thing. I don't have a problem with it. As long as the teachers and staff have the ability in their own space and their own classrooms for reasons to restrict it, and it gives them that flexibility, I don't have a problem with it.
I think it diminishes the importance of where you are. It's like wearing a hat in church at Smut Easter Sunday. I would be, I'm a no hat guy. And I had a hat on all day today, didn't wear it to the tournament.
I'm a no hat guy on this one, too.
You don't even have to ask me.
So I think it needs to go back for revision.
It needs to be a motion.
So just if I may, I don't think it goes back, because the committee's already made a recommendation. They're not going to revise the recommendation. So it's really a motion to change a sentence a certain way.
So you'd be seeking to remove LMS, because CHS was already approved and had the policy. It would be to.
I don't think CHS should have hats either.
Me neither.
And I think a middle school kid's going to smack their buddy with their hat, too, as is a high school kid.
If that's the policy that's been in place, I don't agree with that policy.
And we can change that policy.
A minute.
Yeah.
Just say there's hats on. And there was, was there something in here about pajama pants, too, that I don't remember?
That's another issue with all middle schoolers across.
That's been changed, I think, or it's been at the discretion.
At discretion.
Yeah, it's at discretion.
That's another battle, teachers don't want to fight.
School cannot be responsible for dress choices made at home.
And shoes.
You got shoes, there's some more shoes. I'm going to wear my Crocs in the dead winter.
That happens.
Flip flops, they break. It's, yeah. It's just who I am and how I was brought up. I saw teenagers.
I understand, but in that, what I would say to that is that you tell your kid, then, not to do it. I don't think my kid should not be able to wear a hat, because some people consider it a respect thing.
So you let your kids wear a hat in the state house and in church and during the pledge?
I don't, first of all, don't agree with the combining school with church. Those are two very different, church and state, so let's be clear. During, of course not, we take our hats off during the pledge.
Do you think they do at the high school?
Yes. But again, I also think it's their choice.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion to revise the policy. This is policy, I don't even know.
J I C A G B E B A.
Yeah.
That one.
I'm on it, so I'm ready to make that happen.
Because I see two, I don't know, so that one, to remove hats being allowed at all three schools.
So we do need to say that, well, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There was a very clear permission for religious, medical, and other reasons that was allowed there, so.
Of course.
What language are you proposing for that number four, then?
I don't know, I have to think about it. Because I want to take into consideration those considerations, right?
I think you just have to remove the first sentence, or add, hats are not allowed at CHS, LMS.
I think you have to make it prohibited, if that's what you're saying, versus.
So just if I may.
CHS, LMS, or GMS.
I think what you're doing is rejecting the proposed change. So if you look at the green line model, or red line, whatever it is, the old language says, I'm going to read to you, and if this is what you want to revert back to, it says, headgear, including hats, hoods, and caps, are permitted for religious, medical, or other reasons by school administrators. That's what you're allowing.
Yes.
And then striking the second sentence, it says, CHS staff may choose to permit hats in their classroom. You're taking that away, is what I'm hearing. I'm not saying I'm helping you. And then the proposed change is struck. So it reverts back, number four reverts back to, headgear including hats, hoods, and caps are permitted for religious, medical, or other reasons by school administrators, period.
Yep, I think that would do it.
Yes, I would think that would do it, and I think it should be effective.
Start it next year.
At the start of the new school year.
At this point.
Yeah, like it doesn't make sense to do it now.
Because this will be a first reading again, which is good, because I think you're going to hear a lot of public feedback about this.
Good, I hope so, I want your feedback.
And then we'll have to do a second reading, yeah.
I'd like to hear from staff.
There was a persuasive essay written by our LMS student, so maybe they can come through.
Because I.
Yeah.
Please send it.
I, can we make a note to do that?
I don't think I even have to ask, I think it's going to come.
Okay, yeah, I agree, I think it's going to come, too. And especially the high school, when they hear now the hats are being taken away there. All right, there is a.
First reading.
But there's a motion and a second, so any other conversation?
But this is a, this is a motion and a second, again, for a first reading? Or is this a motion and a second for adoption?
It's a motion and a second to amend this, and then you have to vote.
Then we have to vote for a first reading.
Got it.
So all those in favor of amending the language for policy J I C A N G B E B A, I'm not going to say it, but as suggested, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Abstained? Zero, so three, two, zero. At this point, looking at the policy, are there any other changes?
I was going to say that the midriff, not having to cover your waist, you know, be completely covered when your hands are up in the air, that was my sticking point, but.
That's, I, and you know I was anti that, I think that makes perfect sense, the way shirts are made, I.
I know, I know, so I'm not going to push it, though, because I'd like to see how the hat thing pans out.
I just want to say, I appreciate the fact that students want to wear hats, but I see them as huge distractions in my school, huge. There are pins on them, there are all sorts of other stuff. I just, this is how I feel as a teacher, and it is my personal philosophy as a parent as well. And I would, I don't mean to hurt anyone's feelings or point any kids out, it's just, I am who I am.
I, we heard the words personal expression a lot during that dress code meeting, that students should be allowed to express themselves in that way. And so I think you're going to hear that again.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the policy as amended for a first reading.
First reading, is there a second?
A second.
All right, all those in favor of approving the policy J I C A N G B E B A for a first reading as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Five, zero, zero.
Person who has to get all the.
So just for public awareness, right, this isn't set in stone yet. We want to hear your feedback, please do that.
Please.
And I'm sure we'll discuss it at our next meeting.
For a second reading again.
For a second reading on, what is it, June seventh?
Correct. So get in those emails, because Liz can't wait to summarize them.
I'm not going to be here on June seventh. I know, I just figured that out when I was spouting up. I am not going to be here on June seventh, so.
Oh, come on!
Senior night, but I will do it. I will definitely.
Who's the backup correspondence person?
I will do it prior, I will, until senior night-ish. Yep, I just shot myself in the foot.
Yeah. All right, moving on to exchange students policy J E C B.
So if you look at that policy, you can see that on May the sixth, the board voted to suspend the admission of students from other countries, so the exchange student. And that was a pandemic-related suspension. That still resides in the policy, the board has not acted to lift that. I had checked with the high school, and they hadn't had any requests for exchange students. And literally, within a week of me asking, they said, oops, we got an inquiry. And so I said, well, let me take it back to the board. So right now, it is prohibited, because you have that restriction in there. My recommendation is that you lift that, we're out of the pandemic at this point, and those programs are pretty important and helpful to our school.
Representative Gray, I'll make a motion to lift the restriction on policy J E C B to allow exchange students to once again return to our schools.
Second.
Any other conversation? Seeing none, all those in favor of lifting the restriction on policy J E C B, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Five, zero, zero.
Mike, do you know, do we partner, does our high school partner with any programs that, so that we can send students abroad? I haven't heard anything in the.
No.
You have a particular student in mind you want to send overseas?
I got a couple.
Out of district placement.
I can add to the list.
So we don't, and, you know, even the name of these exchange programs, it makes it sound like somebody comes over and we send somebody over, and that's not the way it works. It really is a study abroad, and it's bringing students to the United States. There are, there are some students and families who can pursue it on their own, but they're actually fairly costly. I mean, even the students who are coming over, you're looking at maybe spending twenty thousand dollars.
We had a program at my high school, I don't know if it was as costly back then, but I had several high school friends who did a semester abroad. I just had never heard of it happening at CHS.
It has happened, and I know one of the girls in previous years lived in my neighborhood with the family, and she brought so much to the school, talk about diversity.
Right, I mean, you know, for our kids to have an opportunity.
But I can't, I love exchange students, they just teach our kids about the world, not our little pod.
All right, moving on. Policy Committee, we will be meeting, I believe, on June seventh, ahead of our next meeting, is that correct? Or are we later?
I have to double, no, it is on June seventh, that's correct.
We now have access to the NHSBA database that was an update this week. So we can start to move forward with planning for policies. Yes, so it's no longer being held hostage, which is great.
Can I refer back to prior community input from a third grader who would like us to have a class pet policy? I don't think we have a board-level policy, but do we have?
There is a board-level policy regarding animals in school. I don't believe that policy prohibits a classroom pet unless they wanted an elephant or something, you know.
It includes miniature horses, because we had.
Yes, I remember that.
But there are so many allergies and stuff like that that have to be taken into consideration.
All of that is in the policy, so it does require approval, and it certainly takes a look at allergies, et cetera.
I will say, a passion project of mine is to start to think about comfort animals or support animals in the guidance office for a period of time in each of the three schools, because I actually very much agree with our third grade friend who said that they're comforting, especially for new students, students who need to calm down or having, you know.
We have a police officer want, or their office, or our, he brings his in.
Yeah.
It would be incredible, yeah.
We have a puppy in training where I work, and.
It just calms, like.
So that's on my list to work with our different school counselors for that, but that.
Can we get a policy for naptime?
Oh, I would so be in on that, please. Recharge, I liked her vocabulary.
I think I had to, this is in elementary school.
Could you tell the students that watch Shark Tank? Like, they were doing really well, and then all of a sudden, I'm like, that kid watches Shark Tank.
All right, so I see job descriptions, we're postponing that until June, reviewing the Student Support Network.
Yep, so I wanted to share with the board kind of a couple of things. We've been putting a lot of work into thinking about the Student Support Network that we have around a variety of students who are running into difficulties in the schools. And this is a framework that we've put together, we've vetted it out with our admin team, and it's ready to be shared here. So this is in response to some of the concerns that we've heard this year. The key thing I want to focus on, and I think the best example to share is the District School Circles one, if you click on that. What our team came up with was this idea that student success obviously has to be at the center of the bullseye. That's what we're trying to focus on, to make sure that all our students are able to achieve success in our schools. And currently, we have school counselors who have a key role in the way that they support students to be successful. And you can see underneath "school counselor" defines that they're involved in tier-one instruction, tier-two small group intervention. Oftentimes, our counselors are the initial crisis intervention, when a student arrives in a school counseling office in some sort of crisis. They are aware of attendance issues, five oh four planning, and assessment for students. So our counselors really serve as a key member of that team. But we've now added social workers and mental health clinicians at, well, social workers are in all three schools, and mental health clinicians are at the high school and the middle school. And we want to make sure that we understand their role and the way they end up interacting in supporting that student with success. And notice, even the peace triangle that's in the middle of this has dotted lines, because they're not firm boundaries, they're not, oh, no, I do this and you do that. These are teams that are working together, but the way they interplay and interact with each other, definitely their strengths are to leverage certain reactions, right? And so we wanted to list that out. So our social workers are going to look more at the tier-two and tier-three interventions. They're going to be involved in family outreach and making family connections, helping families understand community connections also. Home visits would be something our social workers would be involved in. Taking attendance, and when truancy becomes an issue, then making sure that they're involved with that, and also crisis follow-up. So, you know, sometimes a crisis means who's available. You can see the kid here and now, often it's the counselor, but the counselor is not going to provide ongoing follow-up. So that would be perhaps leveraged off to a social worker, depending upon what the need is. Our mental health clinicians are involved really in tier-three interventions. So this is where we have an identified student, there's a identified mental health need, and they're, they're working with that. Now, they may get involved with a referral, or we're concerned, sort of thing, but. Now, they may get involved with a referral, or we, we're concerned, sort of thing, but really is focusing on that Tier Three. Um, it is totally student-centered, it is totally I E P-driven, it is crisis follow-up when it falls into the mental health realm. Um, they're doing functional behavior assessments and behavioral planning for students. So that's, that's their focus. Um, again, nobody's acting in a silo. They're all working together to make sure that they are, uh, supporting our students. So then, the next level of the bubble surrounding that are our school principals, um, our assistant principals, and our director of counseling, in terms of the way that they're making sure that the key folks in the trenches doing this work are being supported at the school level. And then the third tier outside of that is our now district-wide school psychologists, who will be brought in to assist as needed, and our director of student services, who is, um, making sure that support coming from the district is available to the schools and to the people who are, um, working on this. So we had not really mapped this well, and as the model had shifted and changed, and, uh, social workers, um, became more common, like, there was one point, we had a social worker in the district, we have three. We wanted to make sure that we really understood the way this interacted. And so I'm sharing it with the board, um, so that you know the work that we've been doing all year. This chart didn't get created last night. It's something that's been a work in progress. Um, and our goal was to seek feedback on this and make sure that we're putting this in place for next year with some clear parameters. So before I close that screen, I wanted to see if people had inter, or reactions to it, or thoughts, or clarity points that would be helpful to you.
I think it's good outlining what everyone does, because even as a special educator, this one does testing, this one does counseling, this one... Who's calling D C Y F? Who's visiting the kid who hasn't been in school in sixty, sixty-six days? This is perfect. I think it's fantastic.
Would these go into handbooks?
I, I think eventually it would be something available to handbooks, because I think, I'm not sure our parents understand this.
That's what I'm saying. I think it would be helpful for parents to be able to, and I, I did look at the other chart too, which was more of the step, you know, the block chart rather than the circle. Again, not to necessarily say this is all they do, and it doesn't shift along the way, but I think it would be a helpful resource for parents to have, um...
I think sometimes parents, like, they've heard we have a social worker, and they've got a mental health problem, and they say, "I need the social worker to take care of this." Well, they, they may not be aware that there's a mental health clinician that's... So hopefully, this will help people understand what resources are available.
So important, because there are a lack of these resources in the private sector.
This is also an attempt to really define, I mean, there, a, a lot of this has been requests going directly to the district level, but the, the resources are, are in the schools. And so, you know, we're really trying to say, "Okay, how does all of this work?" Uh, how, how do all of these, um, various levels, if you would, interact and interplay and support each other to make sure that we're being as effective as we can? All right, I'm gonna shut it and go back to the document for a second, because there are a few other things on there to, uh, discuss. So one of the things that we've talked about is, um, have, making sure that each school has a written process for student-centered support, including a referral process for M T S S B, um, and that the schools have a way of doing case study analyses, so that, you know, they can learn from situations that have occurred, how can we be as, um, responsive and nimble as we can? The other piece that we've asked is that the schools pick a time, and right now, Monday morning at 10:00 is sort of emerging, where the, uh, Student Support Network in each school would have a common meeting time. And I, I'm being a little bit of a stickler by saying, "I want a common meeting time between three schools," because it'll allow our student services director and our school site to strategically use their time, because they're gonna know every Monday morning at 10:00, I'm in one of the three schools. And it will allow those three teams to interact. So you can see the next point is that the director of school counseling at the high school, Val, has, um, taken on the task of sort of coordinating some vertical articulation, which we don't currently have. So now our social workers in all three schools will have, they know, "This is my dedicated time to get PD needs, questions, procedures, et cetera, just sort of discussed and mapped out," so...
Not students?
Um, that one hour of, of meeting on Mondays, they won't be seeing students. They will be networking.
Will they be talking about students?
Uh, the only time they would be talking about students is, so this is different from the chat process, I, I wanna be clear.
If they're transitioning from a school, one school to another?
Yes. Otherwise, this point is to make sure that we're using our resources the best that we can. And that if there are, um, if there are concerns, district support's not there. Here's the way, here's the dedicated time and place where you can raise a concern to get, "We need training in this. We need, um, money for this." Whatever it is, here, it's formalizing that process, so that, um, hopefully, we can be as effective and as efficient as we can at delivering that support.
Andrew and Peter, chat is like if I was in a classroom, and I noticed that your son was out a lot. I put, like, a referral into guidance, and they'd talk about your student and brainstorm stuff, or "You're extra hungry," or stuff like that, not doing their work.
And then the rest of the document, you can see number three is about the chatter cap meetings. They, they have different names. I'd like, I'd like them to adopt one. Just keep it standard. Um, and that there is an M T S S draft document that will be finalized by those teams, right? So they'll have this ability to get that finalized for us. Um, another thing is that we've asked that special ed meetings be scheduled on a district-wide calendar. The basic concept is that Mondays and Fridays would be left alone without any special ed meetings. Um, and then each school would schedule their meetings on a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and if you click the link, it tells you when those are. Um, what that'll allow is, again, like, the school psychologist is now a district position, um, and they can't be running all across the district. This is what's been happening. They'll, they're sort of ping-ponging from meeting to meeting. Um, they're gonna have to know, "Tuesday, I'm at this school. Wednesday, I'm at this school. Thursday, I'm at this school. Monday and Friday, I've got time to get report writing and so forth done." We have to, you know, we have to give a district overview on how to strategically use those precious resources, and that's what this is an attempt to do. This is in a, um, you know, it's written in a loose type format. In other words, the type format is, we gotta have a plan, we gotta be strategic, we gotta make sure that we're laying it out. The loose part is, "I don't care if it's Monday morning at 10:00, figure that out and let us know." Um, and I don't care if G M S goes on Tuesday, or goes on Wednesday, but just figure it out and let us know, so that we have it now. So I just want you to be aware that, um, we are trying to be responsive. The admin team's been working on this. Sophia's been working on this. Um, and we've had some really good dialogue in pulling this together to present it tonight as where we are, so that you understand it.
Any questions?
One other kind of related thread is that, uh, Sophia, Mary, and I met with a group of parents on, I lost track, Monday night. Um, and it was, uh, parents with, um, special needs students who wanted to have a conversation. Great dialogue, great conversation, in my opinion. Um, and one of the things that emerged out of that is, is the idea that we need to for, formalize this process. So, um, I've reached out to some other districts that have a formalized, uh, special ed parent advisory group, often called a CPAC, um, and to say, "How do you do it? What, what are the structures, and what's, what's that look like?" Um, and I can tell you, if there was any commonality in the room, it was, "That might be helpful right now to, to formalize this, to know that, you know, we have coffee with the principal, but why, why are we not having a conversation with, um, parents of special ed students and our special ed administrators in the buildings to really make sure that we're being responsive?" So it was a great dialogue, great conversation. I think this advances the conversation. Um, and I think forming a group like that will advance the conversation, so...
Moving on to energy, town energy committee and community power.
Yep, so the, uh, the, Kim Kleiner, so the town administrator, reached out to me, because the select board is interested in forming a town energy committee. The catalyst for it is the notion of community power, which, if you've read about community power, there are a lot of communities that are getting on board with, um, bringing one of these plans forward to their community. But in order to bring it forward, you have to have a town energy committee. So, um, Nashua is leading the way in the state on, um, community power. In addition to, I think the number's up to, like, twenty-three different communities who have adopted it. Um, so they reached out and said they wanna do, uh, town energy committee. Would somebody from the school board be interested in serving on it? I answered back, and I said, "You know, the school district's done a lot on energy. It's been a real focus for us, and I think we'd be happy to have somebody attend." Um, and so I'm just bringing it forward to the board. It is a request, a memo is there from the select board to have somebody on there. I think their focus right now is a little bit narrow on just the community power notion, but I think those towns that have energy committees go all over the map in terms of looking at town facilities and ways to, uh, save on that valuable resource. So it's, I wouldn't sign up for it thinking it's just gonna answer that question. I think it'll, it'll, it'll ga, gain momentum and become a long-term commitment.
I'm tapped.
Yeah, that, that was my reaction. I love the idea.
Yeah.
Like, I have no time to do it. Like, that's just the reality.
What days are they meeting?
I don't think they've said it. I think they're looking to see who's interested, and then I, I would imagine...
I'm interested in lowering my energy bill. I don't know how everyone else is doing. I had sticker shock for a normal month with no heat, no air conditioning, over four hundred dollars. Because I've been on one of those plans. If, I don't know how people are doing it. I would welcome being on the energy committee, just to get a understanding of what options are out there, and I will gladly report to all of you in community forums.
So...
Sign me up.
So Liz it is. Liz it is. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll be your backup.
Well, once I get through the senior stuff, I should be free. Yep.
So if there's something you can't go to, let me know.
Will do.
Perfect. I will let, um, Kim know, or maybe she's watching and knows already, but...
All-knowing. All right, moving on to old business. Follow-up on the community forum regarding grading and reporting.
Um, so that's Mary's standing report. I think, as she reported last time when she came to the board, they've made quite a bit of headway on this. Um, I think the objectives and the plans she mapped out, she's, she's taking action on those. So you'll get a final recommendation, I believe, by the end of June.
I think all three of us were in that meeting at one point. I was invited, and then Heidi showed up, and I'm like, "See ya," click, out.
On, so thank you for the update. I'm really interested, as I think the board is, on how we're moving this forward, given all the, the feedback shared a couple of months ago.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, uh, there is a, there's a, there's a line in here for the rubrics that says, "Create proposal for twenty-three, twenty-four, for committees by May meeting." Just curious if that's a deliverable for today?
Which, which line is this?
It's at the bottom of the first page.
Work, study practices, right?
Yeah.
And rubrics, and it's to the board for June twenty-first.
Yeah, I guess I understood the propos, I'm reading this as a proposal. Is that coming to us for the May meeting? Like, what?
So there, if you click on, I think further down, there's a proposal, um...
I guess I received, I, I look at that as procedure review and accountability. I, I, I don't know.
We haven't...
I'm looking at rolling grades, and it has a proposal for May.
Right. I think for the, the committee May meetings.
This one?
Yeah.
The May meetings of the committees.
This is an active link, and the other ones are active links.
This was discussed during grading and reporting at the May meeting.
Yeah.
So I think the goal is to have a final recommendation to the board for the June twenty-first. That's the deadline.
I, I agree, because at the very bottom of each box, it says, "Recommend, recommendation to the board for June twenty-first." And her deadline is June twenty-first. So I think the rest of it is work in progress at the committee level, which is grading report.
Yeah, and I, I, um, I put in my note documents for grading and reporting, there were two meetings. I attended G M S one week, and then the next week, I attended C H S. So there's updates for both of those committees.
If you could spend one minute, literally, what, what's the consensus? What, how is this progressing?
Well, actually, in that doc, there's a final recommendation. So if you look at assessment plan changes, the last meeting we focused on, the percentages for formatives and what training is needed. Um, and then we decided that instead of rolling grades, um, we would have grades end per semester.
Not quarter semester.
Right.
So in the middle?
And then each, so the final grade for each class would be an average of their first semester grade and their second semester grade.
So I would say...
I don't know that I have any comments to that. I don't know if, if I know enough about the model.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm only thinking, so if she presents, if Mary presents this to us on June twenty-first, I'm assuming we're gonna want feedback from the public, so it's not gonna be something we're gonna necessarily approve. June twenty-first, it's gonna be presented to us, so it would probably more likely be approved at our July meeting. Is that...
And then implemented in September or August.
Is that the plan, or other, otherwise, would Mary be ready to present June seventh, so that we could do a final action on June twenty-first?
Yeah, let me double-check that with Mary, because I don't know, remember, she had June twenty-first mapped a while ago.
She did, yeah.
And so if she's on track to do it by the seventh, we'll do it. Um, and if it ends up being, like, a first introduction on the twenty-first, what's, what's our July meeting, fourteenth or something?
I think it's the twelfth.
Twelfth? So, um, that would allow us to still get it approved before handbooks get printed. So that's the thing I'm conscious of, is like, we gotta get this into handbooks. So we're okay, either way.
Okay, sounds good. All right, going back to the agenda. Any other questions on that before we move on?
So, okay, just one question.
Yeah.
There were two things that the last, the last time that Mary was here was, understanding what constitutes formative work, because we had people who didn't know what, what is a formative. And then distinguishing between collected and graded work. I made a comment, if we're collecting work, we should be grading the work. I mean, is that the plan?
And I think that's the plan, that anything you collect is an opportunity for the teacher to give feedback to the student. So there should be feedback happening. Um, but as long as it's not just a check in a book, you know, that, yes, you did this assignment, you did the homework last night. It's, you know, it should, all of the, the, you know, the grading, the point of the grading is the feedback for the student, so they know where they are, and for the teacher, so they know where the student is. Am I getting that right?
Yes, that's what a formative is.
Mm-hmm. Did that answer your question?
Yep.
Uh, moving on to the social studies curriculum, um, we did approve for a first read on May third, so this would be a second read. Are there any other questions or concerns?
I liked how they got rid of some of the redundancies, this teaching of the same thing in, instead of... Yeah, you're, this, yeah, I think it's much more streamlined.
Just easier to read too, than what it used to be.
Was this, um, like, was this socialized with, uh, with, um, the staff that'll be...
The staff helped develop.
They developed it, yeah.
All right, any questions?
Yeah, we, we don't do curriculum in a silo. So just to be clear, if you're seeing a curriculum document, our staff have been intimately involved in the writing of that, always.
Just reflecting back on some of the feedback that we heard, right? Just wanna make sure that that, that's actually happening. Thank you.
All right, seeing no other questions or comments, um, is there a motion to approve the social studies curriculum?
I'll make a motion to approve the social studies curriculum.
And I will second.
Seeing no other questions or comments, all those in favor of approving the social studies curriculum, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
Or delayed.
Abstain?
Before we go into comments...
We were a little, uh, we were off.
Before we go into comments, can I do the update from the facilities?
Yes, that's, I have it on.
Oh, you did?
In bright red.
Oh, look at that. That is, yeah. Couldn't see the red.
You are next. So that was just for minute purposes, five zero zero. And Tina, Facilities Improvement Committee report.
So I wanted to follow up and just let you guys know that, um, the last two meetings that we've had of the Facilities Improvement Committee have been focused on the consolidation option that we had discussed, looking into. Um, so, not today's meeting, but two weeks ago, we met, and Kyle ran through, he gave a very extensive, um, presentation on the sixth option, option, option six, which would be consolidating pre-K through si, through four, no, six. Pre-K to six at L M S, and then seven through twelve at C H S, which was the option that we had authorized him to do. Um, and in researching that, he kind of came up with some other scenarios that could've worked and, and, um, you know, that warranted further, just, you know, he could look into it pretty quickly based on the resources that he already had available and, and the, the background information that he had. So, um, so I encourage everybody to watch that meeting, and, um, you know, think about, um, think about whether consolidation makes the most sense for our community and for our schools and for our students. Um, and then today was... And then today was kind of a, an overview of pros and cons of option five, which is the original, the, the original decision that we had arrived at from all of the community forums that we had, which is building a new elementary school pre-K to four at the Robin Riley site, um, compared to the consolidation option. So I, um, he had made cop, extra copies of, um, this packet that he had kind of distributed. And I know, I know one of the, one of the biggest questions is the price tag, right? If we're comparing these, these two options.
That is the question.
That's the question. Is it more efficient? Um, and his answer was, um, did you guys have?
We're all set.
Um, his response to that was option, he highly recommends option five because of the impact on educational programming. The suit, the lesser suitability of the site and, um, you know, what he cited as a low to insignificant difference in cost between the two options. And we kind of discussed tonight the pros and cons of each and just how, you know, consolidating to the two building, two buildings is not, has a lot of cons. Um, when we look at programming, we look at combining, you know, age levels from pre-K to grade six. He's presented us with some studies today about, you know, the kind of the optimal size for an elementary school being around four hundred, four hundred fifty students. And if we were to consolidate, we would have seven hundred students.
Seven hundred.
Um, in one building. Um, so I just wanted to hand out, you know, Kyle's thought. I took copious notes too in the, um, my notes that are attached to the agenda, the report. So just for your consideration, but, you know, also knowing that the board's decision needs, we need to make a decision, um, soon. Because as Kyle put it tonight, he said, you basically have two, two chances at, at the building aid, right? So we're at, we're on the list. We missed, we didn't take the opportunity in March. And so this coming March is really, we need to make, you know, we need to make a decision to move forward. And, um, or, or else we're, we're off the list for the next by end.
This has cons that I never even thought of. Construction at two schools would be insane.
Yeah, so it's just, I just wanted to give these to you to di- kind of digest and then we, we should have a discussion at an upcoming meeting soon.
Is there an overall recommendation from facilities?
Oh, yes. The, the committee voted to recommend option five, which is the new building on the Robin Riley site tonight.
I haven't watched today's meeting. I watched the one from before, so I.
What was the date on the first meeting?
Uh.
Just two weeks ago today.
Sixteenth? Should be, it's in my notes. Um. The ten.
May tenth, yeah.
May tenth, yeah.
Did he have a, like a presentation that he gave at that time?
Um, he had, he had slides.
Yep, he had a very thorough presentation of options.
Get a copy of the slides.
Do we have a copy of the slides?
Um, I think there, did you, were we able to link them on the GMS site? Reimagining GMS?
His slides from the last meeting?
Yep, from the May tenth.
Um, I remember I was remote.
You were remote. I think he just presented, didn't he?
I'm not sure I had.
Ben presented.
I don't think I saw him either. I listened.
Yeah, we can, we can get them though.
We, we'll get them. Get Kyle's slides.
And then you had another meeting today.
And then we had the meeting today, yeah, where we kind of, we just went through the pros and cons.
So we, we talked about today too, how it's hard for him to come up with a, a price for option number six, cause it really has to, he would need a lot more community input cause it's a total change in philosophy. You go from three schools with a distinct middle school, elementary and high school, but again, the, the middle school. Cause you know, if you take, go to consolidation, you really have an elementary school and then even though seven through twelve, it really is a high school with a junior high school part of it too. So it would, it, with such a change in philosophy, the input that would be needed is, okay, we're bringing seventh and eighth grade up to the high school. How separate do we wanna keep seventh and eighth grade? We're bringing seventh and eighth grade up to the high school. Um, basketball, every town tends to be short on courts. Do we want to bus the kids every time they need to go to, to basketball practice and games? Um, because they won't fit into the high school. Do you, do you build a small gym, you know? But the key thing is how much do you wanna separate the seventh and eighth graders? And then again, when you, um, have the, the pre-K through six, what do we want that to look like? You know, are any grades separated there? Is there something of importance there for us? Do we truly think they're gonna be able to operate out of one gym and one cafeteria or with seven hundred kids in, um, what's, seven, eight grade levels? Do we need to add on there? So it's, the, the price is always gonna be cheaper the less you have to build those core facilities again. So if all we use is, is the high school gym and the high school cafeteria and we don't add on it at all, well, that's gonna make the price cheaper. If there's a feeling that we need or to kind of separate a little bit more or have more core spaces, that's gonna make it more expensive. If you go down the elementary school, if we think we can cram more kids into the cafeteria and not have to build more of a cafeteria or another gym, well, that's gonna make it cheaper. So i- it's hard to get that price without, um, hearing more from the board, the community, as far as what is important to them. Um, and I, I think one thing that, that we heard although it was a temporary thing is when the thought was to bring the, the eighth grade up to the high school, there was concern over that by the community. Um, this would obviously be different, cause that was a temporary thing with, they've already had impacts of COVID and they just wanna finish off their eighth grade, which made a lot of sense type of thing, at their eighth grade middle school. But still, I think if you bring something eighth grade up, there is that community input of how much they want them mixing, you know?
I think we've already had that. That was not fun.
So it, it, I think if. Past year was mostly because the kids are gonna get bused back and forth, right? That was a big part of the problem.
They didn't want their kids around eighth.
High schools, yeah.
I think the other issue too, just going back, is how would we accommodate six lunches or seven lunches when we already have kids at GMS that start eating at like ten fifty-five for lunch and some eat at one o'clock for lunch? That's with the current setup of kindergarten through first, second, third, fourth, adding two more grades to that setup without adding additional facility.
Right.
To me, I mean, you're gonna have kids eating lunch at nine thirty. I mean.
There were also, he talked a lot about, um, the limitations of the LMS site as a, when you're considering adding on.
Yeah.
Um, because, well, yeah, I mean, it's surrounded on all three sides. You really can't build, um, substantially on either side or in the back. You have to come off the front. That puts all of the core offices in the middle of the building. So as you're coming up, you know, driving in, Homeland Security says you need a, a dedicated entrance to the office. So what, what do we do there? It would require renovation of a lot of the classrooms because, um, younger kids require larger classroom spaces. So the educational and programmatic impacts, um, you know, kind of overshadow this, the, the cost savings, which may not be that much of a cost savings in the long run.
The fact we've researched it and have an answer to people who want that option, I think is really important and I'm glad it was done.
Agree. I think we need it in a PowerPoint slide.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Yeah, we discussed that.
To present this.
So what, what the plan was, is the committee voted to make a recommendation. It's an advisory recommendation of the board. I think the plan is to have Kyle come back here on the seventh to present to the board. So then you're the decision makers. You're gonna have to decide which option to go to and give us our marching orders on it. So, uh, so that presentation will be coming.
What additional readiness do we need to do? So the general consensus, I can read the board, right? I think I'm reading the board, is that option five is probably still the right way to go. Right? So with that being said, and assuming that's the direction that's recommended and board approved, um, what readiness do we have to do between now and March?
A lot.
Yeah. Why am I asking?
All the readiness.
What's the funding needed to be able to do that?
So that would all be included in that presentation that we'll bring forward. So you know exactly, we're recommending five and here's what that's gonna look like. And I think we should almost have a month-by-month back plan from March in order to get that pulled off. And so the board would understand that. And I, I'm gonna be honest, it is a huge commitment by the board to make that the priority and to make sure that we are communicating with the community on this, right? I mean, my analysis is, uh, none of this is gonna change a no vote. Somebody who just doesn't support this is there. What we have to do is galvanize the community that this is something that they want and they need to participate in the vote. That's, that's the only way this thing is gonna achieve the sixty percent, um, vote that's necessary in order to sell bond. And it's a lot of work to get to that, but we, we have to stop all the other noise and say, this is the priority. It's what we gotta do.
And we have a team assembled. We've kind of put it on hold this year, but we, we have the right people on the bus to move it forward. We just have to.
It just sounded funny. We have the team assembled.
The Avengers assembled.
Team, like the A-team. Just stated myself.
Can I be Mr. T?
News team assembled. I'm thinking, I'm thinking more Anchorman, actually.
Just on that note, right, and on that point, do we have another community forum in the plan? Because it would probably make sense to give the community an update on where things stand.
Yeah, I, I would think that in that back planning, I would envision in an early fall, like maybe that's our September community forum is.
Absolutely.
This is where we are and this is what we're doing. Um, people aren't gonna pay attention over the summer. So it, it's almost like, let's hit the ground running and articulate and start the work on it.
Yeah.
But again, we would have to lay that out.
Do we anticipate this being ready for the June seventh meeting, or is this gonna be more of a June twenty-first?
Uh, well, so I'd like to think June seventh, because, um, if, if the board were to say, let's let it linger for two weeks. I, I think we need to have a, we need our marching orders by the end of June, because that doesn't leave a lot of time, to be honest.
I would rather June seventh, especially if the end of June meeting is gonna be curriculum-focused, right? Plus.
End of the year.
Focus.
But I do wanna allow an opportunity for the public to hear the information and to weigh in as well.
Right, I think that's why we're saying if it's presented June seventh, we give them the two weeks and then June twenty-first.
And I'm hedging, because the one thing I didn't do is verify with Kyle that he can attend on June seventh. So here we are making a plan for Kyle's night.
Let us know as soon as possible.
And I just, I need to lock that down. But if he's not available, we'll go from there. But I, I'm hoping he is.
Well, thank you for the facilities improvement committee update.
Yeah, sorry. It's late.
No, 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 it's, it's important.
It just happened.
All of these things are important. So that's, that's, sometimes we're gonna be here later. Um, moving on to school board comments.
Oh, I, I might, I, I'll go. Um, I've had the opportunity to attend several end-of-the-year events. The three of us were at the Academic Excellence Banquet.
It's my favorite.
Yep, it's a great night.
It's even better when my son's there.
Fantastic. Um, well done. And actually, um, I was sitting at a table with, um, the JROTC instructor, Colonel, over at, um, Alvern. And he was very impressed by that event. He said, this is a remarkable opportunity to celebrate your, your kind of, your, your high academic achievers and to hear, and I, I say this every year, but the, the students all select a, a staff member or someone in their life to speak on their behalf.
And it was mostly, it was almost all staff, staff members.
Almost all of it was staff members. So you hear from the, the, you know, kind of their, their, their favorite teacher about the student having them in class. And it's just, it's just really remarkable.
How much they know about our kids, watch them grow. It's very emotional. I didn't cry though. And Mike Perez, in closing, he said, he goes, you will not get this in a big school. This, you will never see this in a big school. The teachers know their kids and it was, it was awesome.
Yep. Uh, um, I also wanted to give a shout out. Last night was the CHS Spring Pops Concert, which is always a fun concert. They, um, the kids generally pick the music and it's more, well, pops. It's, you know, they, the kids kind of groove out and do their things. Mrs., Ms. Milligan has done a, um, made a change to the concert format in the past, I think in this past year, where she separated out ensembles. So instead of it just being the full band playing, you know, three or four songs, she has the flutes play a song and the clarinets play a song and the brass ensemble plays a song. So you can, you know, as a parent, it's nice to actually be able to hear your kid play. Um, so that was always, that's always a great concert and they did a great job last night. I know that we have, um, senior nights for sports and eighth grade nights for sports.
June fifth is the high school.
All kinds of end-of-the-year stuff.
All kinds of stuff.
Senior night.
Um, I did want to, um, a couple of things on my end. Um, the GMS Lego League teams have been working really hard and they presented their projects at the Lego League Expo, um, a couple of weekends ago, and they did a great job. So a big, um, congratulations to the GMS Lego League Club and Expo. Um, I'm proud of them and I'm sure all the teams worked really hard. Liz and I had the opportunity with Dr. Jettie and Mr. Totten to sit down and have a, what I think was a great.
Awesome, yeah.
Meeting, um, with Chairman Sun and Vice Chair Stevens from the Budget Committee. Um, Kate and JD were fantastic. Um, it was here. We had really good ongoing dialogue about the budget process, about, um, how we can communicate better. We talked about some of the planning projects, which may or may not impact enrollment, because, um, Kate is also on the planning board. So she has a lot of, um, knowledge about those different projects. We also talked about historical projects that have happened over the last few years and she sent us a great email that I'm happy to forward to the rest of the board.
Yes.
With that information outlining some of those projects. Um, so I think, uh, we're gonna meet again in September was where we landed. And then May also try for a meeting in July, um, just the elected officials, um, and hopefully maybe with the select board that time. So that's the goal. Um, but it was, it was a good open dialogue. I, I felt like it was a productive meeting. It was definitely worth the, I think we were there two hours or hour and a half and it was worth it. I think that's it for me.
Um, I'd like to ask the board to, um, let me read something. I saw one of my friend's Facebook pages that affects me and will affect you all. Um, I've been to the Athletic Scholars, senior night and scholarships is coming up, year-end track, um, banquet. Last town soccer game, that one hit me. My kid has been playing travel soccer with the same group of kids since he was five years old. Academic awards and coming up on graduation. Um, I haven't been emotional up until this point and a group of parents have pointed that out. Uh, and I saw this and I thought it goes out to the parents and to the kids and especially in a town like this where we're all so close. Dear class of twenty twenty-three, I don't know if you have noticed, but your parents have been a little emotional lately. You may even catch them staring at you for what seems like an eternity. I get it, it's awkward. They're just shocked and wondering how it is possible that their baby grew up overnight. But I want to let you know, while they're bursting with joy and pride, this whole graduation from high school is hard on them. Just yesterday, they were trying, tying your shoes and sending you off to preschool. Everyone told them that it goes by fast, but I'm sure they laughed it off, like we all do. But here's the thing nobody tells you. Eighteen years does go by in warp speed. I'm talking blink of an eye and puff. I know this time of year is about prom, graduation parties and hanging out with your friends. I'm here to tell you this, don't forget about your mom and dad. Everything changes after graduation and they know it. The very things that may have annoyed you, they will miss desperately. You know, the millions of dirty dishes in your bedroom, the socks all over the house, empty mils, milk cartons, you get the idea. Their days and nights have been about you and your sports, oops, I just lost it, you and your sports, arts, music and social schedules. Oh my God, I just lost it again, sorry. I didn't emotionally lose it yet. They've gone from bleacher to bleacher, wearing your school's name on their chest for years. They've gone to plays on three consecutive nights and cried with pride after every performance. They pretended not to wait up, but they do, making sure you get home safely. They've gone on pizza runs when you and your friends decide you just wanna hang out. I could go on and on, but you get the gist. If you see your mom or dad cry, just know that they're realizing that their little kiddo who used to slide around the house in footy pajamas while smiling their toothless grin is on the brink of adulthood and it's hard. While they're so excited for what's ahead of you, there's a pang of sadness and grief for what they can't go back to. Let them cry, let them hug you for a ridiculously long time. Let them share the same stories you've heard a million times. And when they let you out of that embrace, look at them and say, we did it. Thank you, I love you. They'll cry again, but trust me, that's the best gift you can give them. Big love to the parents of graduating seniors. Congratulations, class of twenty twenty- Big love to the parents of graduating seniors, congratulations, class of two thousand twenty-three. Job well done. All right, I got a little emotional there for a second. You, Andrew, you just wait, you have no idea, my baby's graduating.
School board comments over here?
No, I mean, I echo the Lego, I think, like, I, I was there, that was fantastic to watch. Lots of representation by, by GMS there. And, uh, I know everyone's kind of in the final push for graduation, so congratulations to all those with, with plans afterwards.
Any other school board comments? All right, and moving on manifest, do we have three signatures?
I don't, we do on these, I don't know about those.
This, I think, was the credit card one, I just. Yeah, that one came out just today.
Just before the meeting.
I mean, if people wanna kind of come in.
There's a lot of miscellaneous on there.
Into the building to kind of sign off on it, that's fine. Supply, 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 it's like, no.
Are there any questions on the manifest, or, so we can hold off on that one? Yeah, no, we can hold off on that one, any questions on the ones that have three signatures?
These have three signatures. Yeah, these all have three signatures.
I can come in and repeat that one too.
Did Ann email that, or did she email backup? I saw an email today.
She emailed backup, but that later on at five, was it five or something, I can't remember, she emailed the credit card one, and I started looking at it, and I know at the end of the year, supply.
Credit card manifest came out one fifty-two today.
It seems like five o'clock.
All right, um, community input? Nope, we got no community, okay. Um, moving on, we will go into a non-public session, um, B, for the dismissal, promotion, or compensation, which is A, of any public employee or the disciplining of such employee or the investigation of any charges of him unless the employee affected, one, has a right to a meeting, and two, requests that the meeting be open, in which case that request shall be granted. B, the hiring of any person as a public employee, and C, matters which if discussed in public would likely adversely affect the reputation of any person other than a member of the body or agency itself unless such person requests an open meeting. Is there an op- uh, motion to go into non-public sessions?
Some made.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I'm staying, five zero zero. Um, that will conclude our public session for tonight, thank you for anyone who is still watching and tuning in. Um, our next meeting is June seventh. As always, we invite you to send any feedback you have on any, um, part of the agenda, you know, there's a lot. It was a really important agenda, I feel like, we talked about end of the year money, we talked about GMS and, and a new GMS, and a, a new elementary school, we talked about, um, all sorts of stuff, and I think it's just.
We want your input.
We do, that's why we do it.
Good, bad, and different.
Yep, so, um, thank you very much, and we will see you in two weeks.